Welcome to the quiddity of the whole meeting of October the twenty first. Enjoying our last days before the time changes once again. So I'd like to acknowledge the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Taha, the Sylks and Snikes people. And it's home to the Meti and many diverse Aboriginal persons. We honor their connection to the land and rivers and respect the importance of the environment to our strength as a community. I didn't receive any late items, so if I could have someone move adoption of the agenda circuit. With my counselor Paige, second by counselor Panaro, all those in favor? And that carries. We have some previous minutes of the May twentieth twenty twenty five and June seventeenth twenty twenty five committee of the whole minutes. Somebody want to move those? Move by counselor Paige.
Can we separate one out? Is that the procedure?
Um, well, I was gonna ask if there's errors and omissions once I get a second.
Oh, I'll second it then.
Second by counselor Payne, and so any errors and omissions, counselor Payne.
On June seventeenth, I just wanted to add the last name of the first public speaker. Her name is Jenna Theeson. And he's um, she's the owner of Silly Sausage.
Yeah, let's spell that.
T H I E S S E M.
Okay.
And Josh's last name is Wapp. W A P P.
W A P P. Okay, okay, thank you. I'll make those changes.
It sounded a little different when he said it, but um. Yeah, I think they should be reflected clearly in the minutes when we have public presentation. Thank you. That's good.
Okay. Do all those come back or can we vote knowing that you're making the changes? We can adopt them as amended with those changes, yeah. So if we could adopt those then as amended. Move by counselor Paige, second by counselor Payne, all those in favor? And that carries. Thank you everybody. And tonight, we are having a workshop on zoning and bylaw update. And we have both Natalie and Ken here from the planning development services and planning department. So unless. CEO or the manager has anything they wanna do, I'm just handing it over then to the two of you.
Great, thank you. Uh, so um, directly going directly into the agenda, we have about eight or nine um. Introductory slides or back with background information. So I thought I would go through those, uh, maybe pause for questions and comments, and then we could go into each of the workshop topics. That looks well for you.
Sounds good.
It's non-existent.
Yeah.
It's non-existent. There we go. Great, so in the background information, I'll talk a little bit about what is and isn't zoning. Uh, why we have a zoning bylaw and then talk a little bit about the timeline and public engagement that we have planned for this fall. So what is zoning? So these are a lot of times questions that we get as planners at the front counter. Can I subdivide my lot in Rosemont? Look at the lot size and dimensions portion of the zoning bylaw. And why do we have such a wide variety of stores and services in the downtown? That's because we're pretty liberal with the types of permitted uses that we allow downtown and throughout our commercial areas. As well, we often get questions about how big of an addition can I build on my house? So we'd be looking at maximum height, lot coverage, minimum setbacks, uh, and other parts of the zoning bylaw. As well, we sometimes get asked, uh, why do new buildings have EV chargers and bike? That's because there's been changes to the zoning bylaw over the years to add those requirements. Uh, as well, we often get questions about why there's so much parking, particularly on the waterfront. And that's because historically we've had very high parking requirements for commercial uses, in particular, uh, large format retail. And uh, we often get questions both from the public and council about um, why people need variances. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Uh, up until nineteen thirty eight, there was no zoning in Nelson, so people could pretty much build whatever they wanted, wherever they wanted. So you'll see those anomalies throughout the community. I can think of, uh, for example, the um, Nelson Brewing Company building on Ladera and other examples throughout the community. Uh, as well, uh, despite our best efforts, we can't possibly anticipate every potential situation. So uh, people often need to apply for a variance or in some cases are re-zoning. And as well, zoning changes over time. Often people think zoning is is pretty static and it stays the same from decade to decade. But uh, as an example, if you look at front yard setbacks for residential properties. It's gone from being non-existent pre nineteen thirty eight to six meters, back to four and a half and so on over the years. So people will sometimes need variances because they may have built something at the time that complied with the bylaw of the day. But we've now changed the rules and so they need to apply for a variance. So uh, what is and what isn't zoning? So as I alluded to in the previous slide, uh, zoning bylaws have permitted uses. So what types of buildings and activities can be built where? Uh, building heights and sizes, density, and that could be in the form of housing units. Or commercial floor space um, allowed on a particular property. We also have subdivision rules, parking requirements, and landscaping requirements. Uh, zoning bylaws don't regulate what we call form and character, so that's the architectural design and building materials. That's dealt with through development permits and heritage alteration permits. Uh, zoning bylaws also don't deal with infrastructure. So for example, how big a water storm sewer height has to be to a particular property. Uh, it also for the most part doesn't deal with anything in the street right away. So patios, on-street parking, signs, that sort of thing. And as well, uh, as a municipality, we're not able to uh, regulate any properties owned by the government of B C or the government of Canada. Although there is sometimes direction for that, for certain ministries to uh, all the rules. And other times ministries don't follow the rules. So uh, continuing on with what is zoning. So on the left-hand side, you have the O C P policy. So in this example, I pulled out the small-scale residential areas. So the high-level policy is we wanna see small-scale residential with some uh, related uses. Like um, transition homes, assisted living, childcare, that sort of thing. We also wanna allow short-term rentals and home occupations in some cases. And we wanna see development up to three stories. You then take that into the zoning bylaw and regulations. And that's where we get into the sort of the nitty-gritty details of the exact permitted uses. Density, um, subdivision requirements, lot coverage, height setbacks.
That's where you get into the small print.
Yes.
Small print, yes, yes.
It's great to be able to make it bigger.
It's a good point. Yeah, and my intention wasn't for you to be able to make that. Um, so uh, on to why zoning. So um, the big picture is it puts the community's vision into action. So it takes those high-level O C P policies that we've been talking about over the past two and a half years. And converts it into detailed regulations. Um, we also zone because it provides clarity and reduces conflict. So people know what they can build on their property and on their block and in their neighborhood. And then if someone wants to deviate from that, we have those other variants or re-zoning processes. It also supports community goals. So if you write your zoning bylaw in the right way, you could encourage more housing to get built. More E V and bike usage and a wider variety of businesses and workplaces. And in um, the times we are now where the province is stepping in and providing direction to municipalities. When it comes to municipal planning, this is also a way for us to show the province that we are listening and we are following their direction. So timeline and engagement. So uh, we have August as a starting point, but for many years, uh, planning staff have been keeping track of uh, concerns and issues with the zoning bylaw. Uh, officially, the process started in August with uh, the research, regulation review and engagement. Uh, we're now at the council workshop and we'll soon be launching public engagement, hopefully in the next couple of days. And we'll also be engaging with uh, development community and the advisory planning commission. We then move on to phase two, so that would start hopefully in November.
May be engage in the business community?
Uh, we can. We have reached out to the. We have reached out to the chamber before. They don't often um, want to get involved in these decisions. They usually say, you know, we can put you in contact with members of the development community. Uh, but we could reach out to the chamber as well and see if they have any. Uh, but we could reach out to the chamber as well and see if they have any interest in this.
I think it's more than, the development community is, you know, like vibrant downtown and, you know, municipalities. Zoning is that supporting that. Directly fund the businesses, I think we'd be.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, uh on to phase two, so we've been moving into the uh actual drafting of the new zoning bylaw. And we hope to present uh the first draft to council and the public in New Year, hopefully in January. And then with this particular uh bylaw, we have a four, four-step approval process. So first and second reading, public hearing, Ministry of Transportation approval, and then final reading. Two more slides and then I'll sort of pause for questions. So one of our goals with this is to make the bylaw easier to understand and simpler to understand for both staff, council, and the public. And one of the ways that we're hoping to accomplish that is doing a lot of consolidation. So right now, our zoning rules um are spread across three different bylaws. So we have the zoning bylaw, which uh dates from twenty thirteen, although there are sections of it that predate that. We have the off-street parking and landscape bylaw from twenty thirteen. And if you are, if you own a mobile home and a mobile home park, there's also the mobile home park bylaw from nineteen seventy seven. So we're hoping to consolidate those in all into one new uh twenty twenty six zoning bylaw. Uh, when it comes to residential development, we're hoping to uh take the complexity that is the residential development. And um consolidate it down into two uses. So small-scale residential, which would describe up to four residential units. And then multi-unit residential, which would be uh uh development, five units or more. Uh, historically, we've tried to write into the zoning bylaw every combination of four units. So we've listed single detached dwellings, suites, duplexes, triflexes, fourplexes. And we're trying to get away from trying to list every possible scenario and just simply concentrate on the number of units uh that were that are on the property. As well, and I won't get into too much detail unless there's some specific uh, some questions about these uh these updates as well. We've been looking at the the map and we've found that over the years, there's some properties that have um perhaps inappropriate zoning. They don't necessarily match what's what uh what the F D is on the ground. So um there's uh, for example, uh seven eleven Tenth Street. We're proposing to change the zone from a C D zone to R two. Uh, we have, for example, eleven two Gordon Street that is currently R four A, and we're looking to change that to R two. So it's uh, the zoning is more appropriate to what's what's happening on the property. And the final um introductory slide is just to delay as well. Uh, we're looking to make some uh zoning changes to the Trevor Street area to align with our new O C P. And uh council's direction on the Trevor Street uh land spot. So maybe I'll pause there for questions and then we can get into the individual topics.
So just uh while we're paused for a second, I'd just like to say that uh councillor Woodward and councillor Lockenberg have now um joined the meeting. And councillor Tate appears to be locked out of the building currently. But she's going to try the front door, so.
Front door is open.
Okay. So councillor Tate will be joining us and we'll have, the whole team will be here.
Okay. In the meantime, are there any questions or comments on what we've gone through so far?
I'll just throw something out if that's okay.
Sure, councillor Payne has some questions.
Um, so I'm I'm just assuming that like the the zones that were sort of added in, like the A's and the whatever. Were just sort of special situations that didn't fit under the use at the time, so new zoning was created. And it just sort of added up, and now it looks like we're consolidating a number of those. So hopefully it will, it will for all be a little less complex, because it is quite a list when you're going through that too. I was checking the map against the color and the number of the units. And we've got the, this map is the current map, right? It's, and you'll get, there'll be a new map with new colors and new alphabet when um these pass in March, I guess, if that's.
That's correct, and we will be changing the colors as well, because the current um bylaw doesn't follow best practice when it comes to coloring. Residential should typically be uh yellow, multi-unit should be orange, and downtown should probably be blue, just as an example. So all the colors are gonna change as well, and hopefully it'll make more sense for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
Once we do the consolidation, the color changes.
Yep, exactly, and and just to build on that, yeah, I think that happens over time, is that your zoning bylaw expands as you get rezonings and kind of like unique situations. And then when you update it holistically, it's just an opportunity to look at how can we combine these and make it simpler? And I think that was the last time when they did the twenty thirteen update, it was the same kind of idea.
Thank you. Okay, so no further questions. And councillor Tate has has arrived. And so then we'll carry on looking at the specific discussion points that you'd like to deal with with council.
For sure, so maybe I'll just do a a brief explanation of the slide. So uh for each of these slides, on the left-hand side, we have the O C P policy that we're looking to implement. And then on the right side, we have either uh recommendations or questions uh for council. So in this particular case, policy five two one three states that we should continue to explore ways to promote fill, you know, fill housing, especially missing middle housing. Uh, in addition to that O C P policy, we have the provincial uh smooth standards. At the moment, the province hasn't said we have to follow the smooth standards. Um, but based on some of the letters that uh we've received, it looks like they may be going in that direction. Um, so we're looking to find uh a middle ground between fixing the bylaw and trying to comply with the provincial standards. But making sure that uh regulations are appropriate, so.
Councillor Payne.
Um, I understand when the schmoo uh legislation came out that, sorry, I just wanna make sure I'm clear that you're talking about. They were going to give municipalities uh the possibility with the setbacks, the heights and the lot coverage. So that's not what you're talking about, like they can't really enforce us to do that.
So at the moment, the province is taking a a light touch. They've introduced this this um schmoo policy manual. Um, uh, and for the most part, they haven't dictated to municipalities that you must follow this. However, the last letter that we received from Hoover, they said there's a small number of municipalities that aren't even coming close to following the standards. And they're um going to be passing legislation to give the minister the ability to uh impose standards on municipalities. Um, if need be, if they find that we're not complying with uh the provincial direction.
So supplemental, so presuming that we are um complying with the direction, which it sounds like from all the changes we are. They're really just looking for non-compliant communities who aren't working within those guidelines that they set in the original schmoo manual.
For sure, uh planning staff believe that if we were to go forward with the proposal that's on the right-hand side of the screen there. We would, for the most part, be complying with the province. There is some discussion about lot coverage, and I think in, uh as I get into this in a moment, um they've. They've recommended a fifty percent lot coverage, and we're saying maybe we should have a more nuanced approach. Because if you just simply allow fifty percent, um that could mean someone could build a monster house with one unit. Um, so we're hoping that we'll have more nuanced approach with, we have.
I have one more. Um, does it matter the topography? Like to me, um when our rain comes down, it it stormwater clears differently in a mountain valley than it does. So lot coverage is a factor in that, is that a correct assumption?
Yes and no, so uh we have a patchwork of storm connections. Um, so in some areas, it could be a problem, in other areas, it couldn't be. If you're on a block that has storm, everyone's connected to the storm system, you really shouldn't have a problem. And in other cases, it's some, some properties have storm connection and others don't. Um, that being said, through our engineering requirements, we do have um, they're called rock pits.
Or an onsite solution.
On-site solution, yeah.
You can use it lots of times, people use rock pits, but there's other uh options, so.
Yeah, and the engineering department has said they don't really have any concerns with increasing the lot coverage because of the onsite solution. Uh, option, if they can't connect to the storm system, or maybe if they just have a storm connection and they could be fine.
So that works for a lot of the newer builds, that, you know, we have a lot of established builds that don't necessarily have storm sewer connection. That's that's my only concern around that.
I I I know it's in there somewhere, because I, because I read it today when I was reading it about this drainage issue. Which, um, to follow up on councillor Payne is, as we cover up the whole lot. Um, is that a lot of times we're building on on uh granite. So it's not like there's a, there's a lot of dirt to start with that's going to allow for percolation of of water. And so when I started thinking about rock pits, I think I, I think I live on a rock pit. I mean, I mean, had to blast to put the house in, I mean, so you know what I mean? Like where is the water going? I mean, that, I think we need to be realistic about the fact that it's not nice loamy soil here. Where there can be absorption of excess rain and and um stormwater. But I just, it is just a concern that that I definitely has as we cover, cover more and more of the lot. Let alone the fact that there's um no area for children left to really sort of play when you put in the driveway and pave it. Or do whatever you wanna do in terms of of having um a backyard or what one might consider um in the olden day, a traditional looking um house. With, say, some front yard and some backyard and some ability to go out and kick the soccer ball around. But, um, yeah, I have some concerns about um lot coverage. And I also don't think that, I mean, I built a large house and it, I had to build it to thirty-five percent. I mean, it's, it doesn't mean that you're gonna have a bunch of monster houses if if a single dwelling got to go to forty percent or forty-five percent. Councillor Tate.
And one thing that we can witness happening before our eyes, if we think about that property up at the, near the cemetery there. Um, the whole front of that has become a asphalt front yard. So some things to think about as we start to infill. Um, and I have a curiosity about the setbacks and ensuring a bit of nuance, given that some roads have um boulevards for snow removal and some do not. Some roads have sidewalks and some do not, some. And so I'm curious what kind of nuance we can incorporate, just to ensure that um you have a place to put the snow and people can still walk. My, on my street, on my block, there is nowhere to put the snow and there is no sidewalk in the winter because of that. It's just kind of, you know, handshake agreement that everybody walks on the other side of the road, I guess, in the winter. But it makes it challenging if the setbacks are designed with lot lines and don't take into consideration whether or not there's that boulevard, sidewalk, boulevard on both sides and so on. Bit of, bit of nuance there.
So maybe I'll just explain the um, the chart here. So we have three columns, so on the left-hand side, we have the current R one um regulations. And as well, if you have the map package, there is a map showing the R one properties uh in yellow. So it's pretty much two-thirds of the city, of basically all of the residential areas. So under the current R one zoning, uh the maximum height is uh ten meters. And you can have up to thirty-five percent lot coverage, although there are some provisions to have more lot coverage. If you're doing certain types of developments or in certain uh certain parcels. So if you're on a smaller lot, uh you can have an additional five percent. Or if you have, uh if you're building a laneway house, you can have an additional five percent. So you could potentially, depending on what you're doing, have up to forty-five percent lot coverage. Uh, front yard setback is at four point five meters, rear yard setback four point five, and then one point five meters from most people on the side. So the middle column is the schmoo standards. So um they're looking to bump the height up to uh eleven meters. They're also recommending fifty percent lot coverage, as I mentioned. Two-meter setbacks uh in the front, one and a half in the rear, and then one point two or one meter on the side. So as I mentioned before, we're looking to have a little bit more of a nuanced approach. We think the eleven meters um uh would work well in Nelson, based on our context. And then looking to have a graduated um lot coverage amount. So if you have, if you're building one dwelling, thirty-five percent, two or three dwellings, uh forty percent, and four dwellings up to forty-five percent. And then a middle ground for the front and rear setbacks. And then we recommend going with the one point two meters for the side setbacks.
Councillor Payne.
I'm just curious about the the rear setback. Um, is that different for laneways and laneway houses?
Okay.
Laneway houses um gotta be one point five meters from the lane, yeah.
I have a couple of questions. Um, when we're talking about two or three dwellings getting to have the bigger footprint. Um, are we looking at something that's um. Completely built, like so is that like a duplex or is that if somebody builds and says they're putting in a secondary suite?
It would be any combination of units, so it could be uh, and as I mentioned before, we're trying to get away from. The, using different, the different residential development terms. Uh, if it was a house with a suite, it would be a forty percent.
Okay. And then further that, just remind me again, so I have the roof, I have the eve. Is my setback particularly to the side, is it off the point of my eve or is it where my wall of my house comes down?
It's the wall of your house, and then we allow eaves to extend into the setback of zero point six meters. But it it might change based on the new proposal, but we allow them to extend slightly. Uh, but they can't be closer than point nine meters to the property line currently. That's a bit of a math exercise. Different, our current setbacks are one point five on the sides generally, so your your eaves can usually um with a one point five meter setback hang out two feet.
So then what happens here, so then that basically disappears. I'm just looking at what you've recommended, so it's like, so you're telling me that most of them are one point five? So if I, if I can hang out to like, so I can have my eve come over like another half a meter. But when I decide that I'm gonna go to one meter as the distance in the house, where is the eve going to? I I I think of the houses that we've built on Robson Street. That are tall and skinny and have sloped roofs. And then they wanna have some overhang because now they've got their um HVAC, their heat pump units right outside the door. And to me are almost like, those are also in the setback space. And that close proximity and, you know, there isn't a concern there, but they are noisy. And we do hear concerns of people who have written to, I believe, all of us as council. In regards to noise of of uh HVAC units and cooling units um in their home because of this close proximity. So please answer the question about if we put, make it a meter, like where does this overhang go to? And do we have concerns about.
Screen.
Fire when we're building like that?
So um and just to clarify, so those houses on Robson, um they are the narrow lot, so they already are allowed to build one meter from the setback. Sometimes they choose not to, because then you um can't have any unprotected openings, which means windows and doors. So it becomes a blank wall. Um, but in that case, you do have a short or no eve, so that's already currently allowed in our regulations for small lots. Um, heat pumps is a consideration and something we've been discussing kind of as a team, because we have gotten complaints from people. Um, they are harder to cite on existing structures. You're kind of limited in where you can kind of put your mechanical after the fact. Uh, but for new construction, we're. Uh but for new construction, we're looking at um having at least a bit of a buffer from the property line so that you could um add in uh noise mitigation. And yeah, it's definitely something we've heard uh throughout the years, um and it it is a bit of a balance, I know that heat pumps are getting quieter and less kind of um they don't bother the neighbors bad as much, but it kinda also depends where you're putting your mechanical equipment and where your neighbors' windows and doors are, so. So we're considering it and uh it will be in the list of amendments when we bring forward a draft, some consideration of that.
So back to the first question about the eve.
Yes.
At this point, when we narrow this down.
Yes.
Um, will eaves be able to go right to the lot line?
No, no, they'll always have to have a bit of a setback from the lot line.
Okay, so that that's yet to be determined.
Uh, yet to be determined, but it'll probably be similar to our current rules, uh which says you can't be closer than zero point nine meters to the property line. Uh and that is to to account for snow.
Natalie, um can in terms of the small lot development, like this would lose development opportunity under our regs. Can we keep in the plus five percent on small lots?
You could look at that.
I don't think we wanna reduce the development opportunity.
I I think, cause while we did get a, we we were presenting this to the planning commission earlier today and they had asked a similar question on why did we not do the graduating, the graduated scale as thirty five, forty, forty five, fifty? And we thought there might some something might come up where we wanna incentivize or um something like that and that's a good good point, I was able to put those two things together, we could maybe add that extra five percent for small lots. And then still show the province that we're complying, that actually might even like that more because we're sort of under certain circumstances meeting their threshold.
I have to say, I don't think that the city of Nelson is in violation of this, I think this is major cities who actually don't wanna adopt the fact that they have to build three units or even two units on an R one lot. I think that when we get down to the minutia, I think the government is still years off on tracking down whether or not we've gone from one point two to point zero nine or anything along that that line in terms of um they're out after I think much bigger fish than the than the city of of Nelson, cause there are definitely communities that do not want to change their R one from single um homes.
I think in terms of the practicality of building four units on most of our lots, what I'm seeing is you believe going to forty five percent will enable that versus staying at or thirty five percent and and having to come back for variances and all sorts of things, so.
And what we're seeing is since we've made changes to the the rules, was it last uh last year or two years ago, developers are coming to us and saying, well, I want to build four units, but it's very difficult with that thirty five percent lot coverage, so they're either choosing to build fewer units, so maybe three units, or they're in some cases uh like Paul Street, they're choosing to apply for variances, so uh we're also trying to think of managing our time and council's time as well, trying to minimize the amount of variances, cause I think that would be probably be the route that developers would wanna take. Just take that risk, apply for a variance so they can get that extra unit. Um although there have been some cases where they just simply said, we're not gonna bother, we're just gonna build two units or three units.
Elsewhere.
Thank you. I'm wondering, um, the units that are being built in our town, say the last few years, what is the average? Is it is it one bedroom or studios that are being built or? Cause I'm thinking like you could build a larger unit, a lot like a two bedroom or a three bedroom, which I think I've heard I've seen is needed. But I'm wondering, does developer's calculation say if I build four studio units, that's uh or pay off for me then if I build two two bedroom units?
I do have the numbers, I just don't remember them off the top of my head, what I can say is the most common housing unit type that's getting built is uh studio and one bedroom suites.
In apartments?
So.
What you're talking about in-
Talking about apartments.
Single-
All you know more about like squeezing as many as we can on a lot.
Hmm.
But is it is that addressing what is needed? Or are developers saying try to you know ob- obviously maximize my cost benefit?
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I'd say that most of the development in the um like R one, um even by by spec builders is two or three bedrooms. I think typically they try to aim for three bedrooms, cause I think that's the most sellable, but um the configuration might not necessarily work for a family, just depending on the situation, but I think they're usually two or three bedrooms. Mine don't rate.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Just in terms of councillor Tate's concern about too much blacktop, you know, I don't think we want our residential units all with blacktop facing the street. Um is there, is that being contemplated in the landscaping bylaws or anything like that?
We are, we have, we, it's not specifically mentioned in this presentation, but we are potentially looking at putting in a requirement for permeable surfaces, so.
We currently have that.
We have that, but we're looking to potentially modify that, so it's clearer, um so you'd have basically have three categories of of um development, so you have the building footprint, a certain amount of permeable surface and then the difference between the two, you could use for driveways and sidewalks and that sort of thing, so we would be looking at that.
Updating a bit, right now you have to have thirty percent of your lot be permeable?
Yeah.
So that you know doesn't include driveways and walkways, that sort of thing. The the tricky thing with permeability is that you don't need permits from the city to pave your driveway, um pavement is very expensive, so it's asphalt, so I don't see a lot of it in newer builds, but I think it is kind of more of a historical thing where people have a lot of their um properties aren't surfaced. Oh yes, we currently have that regulation in our zoning bylaw right now.
Councillor Payne.
Uh that's mainly just what I was gonna ask, so we have it in the bylaw in place, but we're unable to enforce it because people don't need to tell us what they're like I thought, I thought the ones up by the cemetery were concreted, were they concrete or asphalt?
I don't know, it's between concrete and black- blacktop and asphalt and I don't know which ones are permeable.
Okay.
Permeable or impermeable, so can water get through it or can it not?
Well, I'm I'm just-
No, but I don't know the difference between concrete and cement and asphalt and blacktop, all I see is a paved in
Yeah, and you're okay to get through it, those are all impermeable, so it doesn't make any difference which one you're talking about.
And you're driving.
Oh, okay, what about the little bricks?
I mean, you can get permeable asphalt.
Permeable.
You can.
It's it's cement that I've never seen as um permeable, but um yeah, I didn't, they didn't look very permeable to me when I was driving by there the last.
It's an enforcement issue just like with a lot of things, the only, other than the actual building construction and um uh you know uh driveway access, someone decides to pave their entire backyard, it just be it becomes an enforcement issue, we have to rely on the neighbors to put in a complaint and then we would let them know that there is that perme- uh permeable surface requirement.
Okay, great.
Unless they did it before the final inspection and we showed up and we saw that, which I mean is the blame against the plans, yeah.
Yeah, we could catch it during the building inspection, yeah.
And then they'd be made to take that, replace it. So that would be an expensive mistake if you were unaware of that.
Yeah, and we put it on everybody's plans, too.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm sure you do, but I'm, yeah.
So I have a I have a follow up question that I just forgot, sorry, I don't remember.
I have I have a follow up question, it's the question that I always ask, so and just riffing off um councillor Woodward. My cursory glance is that on the R ones, we're getting lots of three bedroom plus suite, that's three bedrooms are sellable and then you get the plus suite, which is like a one bed. I am so curious because those get called mortgage helpers, which actually just makes the whole thing cost more and then your mortgage is more and then it becomes more out of reach and then you're fleecing your two university students in on the North Shore and Kamloops, just a thing that happened to me once. But I have a curiosity about some kind of incentives to stratify that to stop making it a mortgage helper, which just feeds into the inflation problem and and find ways to have those be family homes, some people don't need a three bedroom, some people would be happy as a retired senior person, but they wanna own it and that gives that I would just like to see us move to more flexibility in homeownership and in that like neighborhood sense of being a part of it and rather than just being a transient person who lives in a basement, right? It's not, it's not a great way to live, so even though we we're densifying these lots, in theory, we're not actually making that homeownership and that community participation more and more accessible. I don't know who to tell that to, just gonna tell it to YouTube for now.
Um stratification is is allowed, so if it's unoccupied, uh it would be up to the developer if they stratify the building lot, so uh with the secondary suite, you get some relaxations in the building code. Um and so it ma- it makes it more challenging to stratify a secondary suite because of those relaxations. But um if a builder wanted to build like a single uh or uh one bedroom as part of their build and stratify it, they absolutely could do it, I think it's just um more of an unusual product to try and sell, I'm guessing. But uh not something that that the city would be restricting. Um and if it's a previously occupied building, and I think those have come to this council once or twice over the years, then they actually need council approval to stratify those buildings. One of the challenges is that you have to bring that existing building up to building code, today's building code and get an architect to sign off on it, it is possible, but in some cases it can be financially unfeasible to do that. So that's kind of the the trick of stratification, but it's allowed in the city.
So answering that question, thank you councillor Tate for asking a question.
Just keep saying that.
And um I'm gonna say, I'll go to you.
Well, no.
So um going back to the runoff in storm, um can we not make it that when you start building multiple units on these R one lots, like three or four? And using up all the space, um can we not make it mandatory that they hook into the storm?
Right now, our bylaw um says you have to connect to the storm unless it is waived by our city engineer, which is Colin Anis. If there is a storm option available, um they are required to hook up to it. But in some areas of the city, it's just completely, it's just very, very expensive to bring that service to the property line, like maybe if there's four units, you can justify some of the cost, but we're talking like twenty to fifty thousand dollars plus, um just in areas that are under service with storm infrastructure. Um so right now, the default is that they hook up to storm. I will say though, that if you um if uh the city engineer allows an onsite solution, um even in that case, they still have to prove that it's feasible and possible and get an independent engineer to design it, review it and send it to Colin for approval. Um there has been one instance where it was bedrock and it was not possible and they had to pay a large amount to extend the storm infrastructure. So it is carefully looked at um and does require engineering oversight for the whole construction.
Councillor Page.
Sorry, just while he's finishing writing there, you know, the one thing about um a storm system as well is it only has so much capacity, right? So if we pave paradise, right, and all the water goes into the pipes, the pipes aren't big enough. So that is something that we have to be cognizant with all of this and that's where you get to this um point source control that you might have on a lot where you, okay, if you wanna come, use up all your lot coverage, you have to figure out what to do with the water then, like we, you know, it can't always be taken into the system. Cause the pipes are only so big, that's when you blow manhole lids and that's when you get flooding and stuff, so. It's just worth noting that, you know, I think we've done a great job, or the ci- the city's done a great job in the last couple of decades to um resolve some of the storm issues that we have down on Baker that used to flood out certain stores, you know, and down here below. Uh and we just wanna make sure that we aren't just rebuilding those again by allowing people to use up all of their permeable surface, right, and um just start passing that all down the pipe.
And we're gonna do a bit more research on the storm issue, it is definitely um comes up quite a bit and we have discussions about it internally, a rock pit is one way to deal with it, there's also um onsite storage tanks, so you can reuse that water for your lawn and garden, so it's a good option and lots of places do use those. So there is more creative solutions and something that we have on our radar and we did mention as well in the report.
Councillor Page.
While we're on storm, I have two questions now, so the first one is, we have looked at the local service uh improvement bylaw, we made those changes. Uh is there contemplation when a unit is going in and is that one of the o- opportunities to impose a local improvement in an area? If it if it's deemed necessary to to meet the need or and put together a latecomer agreement so that it it can be phased in over time, maybe those two don't go together, but it it makes me think that like if there's a sixplex going in, if Paul Street needs to get an upgrade, that's and there'll be a benefit across the whole neighborhood that everyone should share in the local area. It's a faster process to get to that.
Sure we can force existing homeowners into a local completely?
It's a, it's a petition, so they would
Yeah.
elect to participate it in or not, so if it's in an already constructed area, you're gonna have a harder time getting people to participate in that shared agreement, which is often what we see, which is infill. Um but yes, that could be a tool that we could use uh to build up our storm infrastructure. Um the other option is a latecomers agreement, so if anybody does put in um like a really expensive service and other people can connect to it, we can we can go for it with a latecomers agreement. Um so those are some options, latecomers agreement, they uh the developer doesn't necessarily get paid back that money, but if somebody connects, they get a portion of it.
Guess the part I'm thinking of, and maybe this is a different conversation in how we create greenfield development within the outer reaches of the city where some of this infrastructure doesn't exist and what that plan looks like from a stormwater expansion perspective, like how are we as a city going to approach areas where new development would happen and these are some of the barriers, are we gonna have a pool of funds coming out of the utility that allows for those expansions, are we gonna automatically assume that we're taking it on as a whole city uh to do those improvements, are we always gonna be like each development must get across that point and I I just think there might be a place there to kind of have a a whole city approach. Um at looking at that, so that's that was my first question. Uh my second question, what I heard from Kate and and in your response about the stratification piece, we have, we pro- we provide these relaxations, these opportunities to do additional density when building. Then if we do wanna do stratification, there's a lot of responsibility for the property developer to bring everything up to code and to and to maybe accommodate the fact that those relaxations were in place and and make adjustments because of them, so I think that was cr- according to the crux of what councillor Tate had been saying. Uh in in the fact of like what is our policy and how does it 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 push away from the ease of making these things only one property versus supporting it, like if we're adding all of these encumbernances uh when it's stratified to, you know, obviously prevent someone from, I guess the intent would be to prevent someone from getting those relaxations just to build something, just to split it back up again, but but maybe we need to challenge that presumption, like maybe there's some thoughts there, but I'm not sure what, your planning mind might think of that.
Oh, I it's it falls under the Stratofproperty Act.
Yeah.
And so the the Stratofproperty Act says that uh it has to be brought up to the building code, so I think there's some restrictions
Sure.
on that, but maybe maybe that's something that council would advocate for some more flexibility on that end, because I think it can be pretty restrictive in historic.
But are relaxations though?
I don't, we don't have any relaxations that I can think of that would prevent stratification.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it is mostly the strata.
I think that's the idea, smooth, that's that's trying to get for ownerships on a residential lot, that's the whole idea of it.
But that's not like the existing footprint, the existing neighborhood character, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, it's
It's different.
It's challenging to, you know, you know, you uh I assume a laneway house could be stratified, it would need building code.
In our current bylaw, we do-
I was gonna say, we don't allow, I was just gonna, that was my follow up question, he started that and I was gonna say, we don't allow laneway houses to be sold.
We don't currently, but um it might be something you wanna consider, um as we update the zoning bylaw, I think, you know, when we wrote the laneway housing regulations, there we were really trying to incentivize rental housing, cause there was a lack of rental housing. Um but what we've seen over time for laneway houses is that often people do use them for family members. And so they are a way for people to kind of get into the the market and have a have a home, so just as some background.
So just to follow up on that, when these, like we haven't built a lot of these four unit complexes, but so the only example we have is um really by the cemetery at the top of L L.
Falls.
Falls. L, some street that starts with an F. Um and and all of those are are being sold, so they they were built to be sold, so they they're already stratified in terms of of what they're doing up there. I wouldn't imagine that, you know, um I'm gonna build something that has three other units and it's solely for rental, like maybe, maybe I am, but um yeah. I mean, so so far, those that that have had multiple units, where we've gotten away from having the secondary suite or the laneway house, they have been built to code so they can be sold, basically as individual properties.
Correct.
And in terms of rental versus homeownership, where is the O C P on that? Cause we have had a policy of trying to encourage rental, cause rental hadn't been built. Are we shifting more to ownership, or we can still find a balance, or can't recall? Is any policy statements on that?
I don't recall offhand what the policies are, but I'm sure that the O C P supports both. I think that we're saying, I think um you know, five or six or seven years ago, we were really um trying to incentivize rental housing, and and now I think we have a shortage of both. Um so I I would guess, but can't recall.
Okay.
There there's policies in there that would support.
Okay. Seen any other hands, so maybe I'll move on to the next housing topic.
Be a long night.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the amount of time versus the amount of slides. Um on to the next housing topic, so uh policy four point one three of the O C P states, we should be exploring options to regulate density through height and lot coverage rather than rather than uh dwelling unit maximums, so that means um for example, two hundred units per hectare, something like that. Um so many of our zones regulate through height and lot coverage, just like the R one. Um there's nothing in there about units per hectare or floor space ratio or any of those other planning terms that we throw around. Uh there are a couple of exceptions to that, though. Um uh so there's that issue, and then there's also the issue of, because of the smooth legislation, we have a bit of incompatibility between our different residential zones. So when you're creating a zoning bylaw, you should have a transition from your R one, as an example, is your lowest density zone, all the way up to your R four zone that has the most density. But because of the smooth legislation that had mandated four units per lot on R one, um we have the, the R two or the R three?
It the R two.
The R two, that only allows three units, so um we're looking to fix that, so there's a nice transition, so people can clearly understand that R one is low density, and then we're moving up to the R four high density. Um as well, we're looking to uh make some slight adjustments to height. Uh and again, you do have the maps in your uh package there, if you wanna see where these different zones are. Um there's a individual map for R one, R two, and R four. Um oh regarding the height, so we're looking to make some slight adjustments to the maximum uh height, so for the most part, um the current height maximums are one meter less than what you've seen in the chart here, so we're looking to bump up R one, R three, and R four height by one meter. And because we actually start measuring how um high is a story, about three point three meters, and you start measuring that out, and you're finding that a lot of times our current heights are um set at a point where it's not, you don't, they don't have quite enough height to accomplish three stories or four stories or whatever it is. So that combined with how we're changing how we operate, we're looking to bump that up by one meter. We're also looking to uh make some uh minor adjustments to the lot coverage. We've talked about.
And we can go there.
Yeah.
Um so why is R three eleven at three stories and R two of twelve at three stories? Is that an error?
That's a good question. Uh so currently, R two is twelve meters, and we're looking to keep it at twelve meters. And for whatever historic reason, R three was eleven meter, or sorry, ten meters, and we're looking to bump that up to eleven meters. That could be um bumped up again to twelve meters. I think, though, you're potentially moving into that situation where if you allow twelve meters, you could also be allowing four stories. And the O C P says we should be allowing three.
Wouldn't we do that in R two then?
Bring it down to eleven?
Yeah, then R two should come down.
Okay, so R three, R three is the downtown residential. So that that's our heritage area, that's the area that surrounds downtown with all the old heritage homes. And for the most part, these homes are already built out. Um we, since at least twenty thirteen, have allowed unlimited density in R three, and so people have kind of made suites and added units along the way to encourage a lot of rental housing. I think it's just the order that it's currently presented. I think it really goes R one, our low density zone, then R three, kind of our character area, and then R two, so it's not making sense chronologically here, but I would say R three is very similar to R one. We were just, uh historically, in our downtown residential zone, people added a bunch of units anyway, so we were just kind of uh continuing how that because the footprints and because that's how people used to build homes as well.
So should R two be eleven meters then?
Or do they go to four stories, or not at risk of that?
That could be something that we could look at.
I think that too with R three, it it is still to kind of, for the most part, it's gonna look like a single-family home because of the size of lots, where R two, the lot sizes can be larger and might look more like an apartment-style building. But probably the discretion in height is what I would would gather, and I think it has always been a slightly higher than the R one and R three zone.
That's a good point. There's a lot of these blowing out anomalies in the bylaw. We don't know historically why it was like. Um unless you've been around for a while, maybe you know the story behind it. Um the last two rows that we have here are just to illustrate what we're trying to accomplish, which is create that transition. So we have a a theoretical six thousand square foot lot. You could have four units if you're in R one, you could have between six and eight units if you're in the R two or R three. And you could have fourteen units in R four. And the asterix is just to me, to to indicate this is based on certain assumptions of a unit size and that sort of thing. That's all I have on that slide.
So, sorry. Counselor Tate. Where did where did you land on should it go to eleven? No, because it's already built? I I I'm curious about that, cause we don't want like a hundred variances to go to four stories, cause we just need another thirty-one centimeters or whatever.
Um you know, I I would kind of recommend keeping R three at eleven meters, and I do think it does make sense to keep R two at twelve meters. Just because some of the lot sizes for R two can be large, and you you may see over time larger like more apartment-style complexes, where in R three, I just don't think that you are going to see that because of the generally the size of the lot. There is a few that are kind of over your typical twenty-five by one twenty, uh but primarily those larger lots are in R two. So I, you know, from my perspective, I think the way we have it written here does make sense to continue on, if I.
Uh and an R two is still three stories.
It's still three stories, but you may just have a builder, a bigger uh.
You might have an H five unit on top.
Yeah, or you might have a more, like the roof line, like at eight oh five Nelson Ave, which is the Nelson Karas building, can be cornered to the Dairy Queen. They have some roof line features that we would consider in our height, so um I think this just gives a bigger property um a bit more flexibility on those large buildings, is what I would say.
That's a good point, and as well, if you look at the R two versus the uh I guess we don't have the R three map here, but if you just look at the R two um map, historically, R two properties have been apartments and townhouses. Whereas the R three, like Natalie said, is lower uphill, which is primarily electric houses, so I may have, I may explain why it was a discrepancy.
So through the chair, the, because the R three of those twenty-five, so we're not it'd be pretty unlikely, because this little chart here says six to eight units per lot. On those, I I I don't know, I you might wanna have a sober second look at that. I am curious, cause we can go to the future and be like putting lots together, and then all of a sudden, there's a giant thing on Victoria Street with two little vernacular houses on either side and mm just, you know, with some fresh eyes in the room, it might be worthwhile just to see if there needs to be tightened up somehow.
Um, you know, that's a, that's a good point. So just to kind of clarify, right now, R three doesn't have a maximum density cap, and it like in in twenty thirteen, and we're not proposing to add one. So that that rule has been in place for already ten plus years. This um, I apologize if this is not clear, this this Excel spreadsheet that we're trying to show that a five hundred and fifty-seven uh square meter lot is actually two double lots combined. Um and this is just like theoretically, if you jam as many units in there as possible, that's what we think you could get out of it, um with some caveats on there. Um but again, I think that's probably not very typical or very common, but you could, right now, in R three, um see like lot assembly. Um and some of this happened, it's just very uncommon. And then when you move down to the last uh row in this um Excel table, um it's just a much larger size of lot that we, I don't believe we have in R three lots of size. But it would require land assembly.
Yeah, it would be land uh land assembly or, yeah, land assembly and then a subdivision or something like that, so this is just, again, showing that progression of density.
Yeah, and the main, the main thing for this workshop is really just to get council feedback. Is council sort of comfortable with what we're proposing? Do these things make sense, and if they don't, yeah, just to give us some feedback on that. Um so in R three, we removed the density caps in twenty thirteen. Um we haven't, that hasn't created a lot of pressure on those units. Um and we haven't seen land assembly there, but it really was to give R three some flexibility, because that has kind of been historical. Um for R two and R four, we're also proposing to remove those density caps. And theoretically, you could get um more density on some of those units, so yeah, I don't know if council has any questions on those, but that's, no, it makes sense, okay?
Okay. So on to the next housing uh topic, so there's a number of policies within the O C P that talk about potentially considering uh reduced parking standards, particularly in areas with transit access. And also continuing to explore um regulatory, financial, and other incentives to help encourage purpose-built rental housing. So the recommendation, and I think there's a uh error in there, I should probably say, reduce parking for non-market affordable housing and rental housing units from uh the current requirement of one stall down to half a stall per unit. So for the most part, Nelson's parking standards are pretty reasonable when you compare it to other uh municipalities. Um the one exception to that is for affordable housing units. Uh there's been many studies done over the years, from universities to municipal governments, to various different think tanks uh that have studied this issue, and they've all shown that um need for parking is less than one stall per unit. So somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter to three-quarters of a stall per unit, depending on if you have uh any good transit access, or you don't have any transit at all. Uh as well, parking is very, very expensive to build, and the cost is often passed on to the developer who then passes it on ultimately to the tenants in the form of higher rents. Uh in many cases, an underground parking stall can sometimes be as much as a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per stall to build, uh if it's completely underground, and even surface parking stalls can be in the neighborhood of thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars per stall, which is quite costly, uh considering that many of those parking stalls probably never get used, particularly for the affordable units. And as well, in the spirit of supporting uh Nelson Next, uh parking is a huge amount of urban as well.
Counselor Payne.
Uh so Castle Guard went to point two five, is there any reason we didn't consider that, or?
Well, I think we're looking.
Like incremental steps are are certainly um welcome. Uh I think if we're looking at Nelson Next as, you know, some of those goalposts and looking at the O C P as uh twenty fifty, then
Yeah, we were, we were aware of Castle Guard reducing their parking. I think we are uh maybe just throwing that number in there as a starting point for discussion to gauge where councils at on this. We we want to be progressive, but we also want to be um be shocking, I guess, to the community. You know, we could go all the way down to zero and let developers just decide how uh how much parking they should build or not build. Uh but I think staff have kind of tried to go uh middle ground and use that point five as a starting point for the conversation.
Knowing that there's always still variances, or you can do uh contributions to the act of transportation. Um and you know, for affordable housing projects, maybe a variance is also just, you know, an option that goes to council, so.
And that's a good point. Uh in certain situations, for example, in the downtown, you can have a fifty percent parking reduction. So you could get that down to point two five if you're downtown and you're building a mixed-use building. And then there's also the uh three thousand dollars per parking stall that you could pay to not build them.
Supplemental?
Sure.
So B C Housing doesn't like the mixed-use model, so would that preclude those buildings from taking? Is that not what I was reading in several different places here?
It is, we haven't highlighted it, but it is in that list in attachment one. We are looking.
So to get a variance in that situation, wouldn't it?
In the downtown, we're exploring, could we write a regulation to um uh allow this for B C housing builds downtown, so they don't need to have that mixed-use component, so. Yeah, we don't know exactly what that could look like, or if it would, I don't know, C P amendment, but it is something that.
So if it's just downtown, then it would be, your unit downtown would be less expensive than your unit out in Fairview because of those parking costs.
Yeah, yeah, which we have.
Land costs are probably quite a bit more expensive downtown than elsewhere as well, right, so. Like, I think you have to balance, like parking's a problem in our downtown, and we have a the building that was built with fifty percent parking, and now we have it's sitting half-empty, so I think there's the practical side of it as well, um because you know, someone builds with less parking and sells it, and and it's our problem, because now they wanna park on the street, and we can't get a snowplow by, and and we create our own problems, you know, we're have narrow streets, and we have steep topography, so it makes it challenging and in Nelson to, you know, to you know, to address, you know, the cars and um so, you know, the fact that we will allow a developer not to build any parking and it gets sold, and then the person that buys it is is parking on the street, it's kind of, we we just have to be cognizant, it doesn't, you know, meaning that person's not gonna get a car. I get on affordable housing units, you know, we normally come with a variance on those, because the reality is that, you know, people own cars there, when we have our residential zones, et cetera, with the cost of housing, the likelihood is someone has a car. Pretty rare that someone can buy a eight hundred thousand dollar house and not have a car, you know? So so I think, you know, we're challenged by, you know, our narrow streets and topography and snow, and um you know, I don't think you wanna set yourself up that we allow developers not to put in parking, and then you end up having a parking challenge on the street.
Counselor Ackerman.
Um just as a recommendation, since that's what you're looking for, um go low is my recommendation, as long as you're exploring other enforcement for, or we do some sort of um licensing or permitting, I mean. Um and start to push permitting up to control that. So I'd like to see some, something back about. something back about permitting, extending what permitting would look like.
Can you just expand a little bit? Are you talking about giving everybody that?
A parking pass.
A parking pass to park on the street.
Yeah. Just explore.
We do not allow new construction to get a parking pass, parking pass. So if you choose to install new rules and not build parking, um then you don't don't get one. But if you're a historical building that was built, you know, in the past and that was just kind of how it was, we do provide parking passes. That's our current system. But for new projects, if you opt out of it, um then you'll have to pay for private parking. There is options, but.
Yeah, alright. Yeah, so as we push outside of the area where we do permitting, then I'd love to see what extending that would look like. And we could do it following based on demand. So for example, if something's built and then we start to notice parking issues as people who were supposed to park there start to park there and we'll do some enforcement through permitting.
I guess we've learned that lesson a little bit, Councilor Lockenberger, in terms of the fact that the person that built the Victoria Building and asked for the fifty percent reduction in parking has come back to ask to get parking permits and that, you know, the deal was.
No.
No.
And so the answer is no.
And the answer is no.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Which is.
Those people are parking who knows where, but also they're not whole soul because of the.
Well, this that's part of what I'm saying is that permitting includes enforcement, right? Like you you don't do one with the other. So if that's happening, that those people are now starting to park, then we have to consider, are we doing a good job with enforcement? Should we invest more in enforcement? And if not, if we're saying that it's not working, then that information coming back to us would change how I my recommendation. I would be like, well, then let's not go for point five, let's go for point seven five. Cause clearly we don't we just be creating, as the city manager is saying, problem for ourselves.
Can I just ask you a further question on the, you said that in your line here, it should have said reduce parking for non-market affordable housing and rental housing units. Are we talking about my suite in the basement or are we talking about a rental building like the Valhallas?
Rental apartment building, so there's a new rental building.
Thank you. Councilor Page.
Well, your okay, so I'll just share mine too. Um I like what Lautenberg has said. I I'd like us to retain the flexibility that comes with setting the bar lower on the required mandatory parking. I think we are seeing a particular product that's been put onto the market that has is trying to figure out how to deal with that, given the choices that are made, but they had the flexibility to make those choices. Or at least because we provided it at the time or with the bylaw, the commercial district allowed it at the time. And the market will learn from that. That's that's the beauty of it, right? So I just don't want us to, because one project, there are a lot of elements that go into a product when it's delivered uh and how they're targeted and how they're structured. So just because we're seeing it in one spot, let's not necessarily like raise that bar overtly conservatively because we've seen the outcomes of that over the last forty years. Uh and why we're in the deficit we're in now. So as long as that flexibility is there, as long as our long-term parking planning continues to operate gives us that opportunity to look at it through data over time. But part of it, I know some people will light their hair on fire with the contemplation, but part of it is is trying to ensure that our city is more walkable, that uh the types of people that are accommodating and and living within our communities are are doing so with you know, a variety of ways of moving around and and it's not always one car, one person, one parking spot. Uh because that's not always how our communities have been designed and and it's partially how we're trying to obtain that heritage aspect, so. But it there will be growing pains and it will be at times inconvenient because cars are really, really convenient.
Really, really expensive.
In many ways, many dimensions, yeah.
Councilor Payne. I I'm just curious, because we're talking about that um um building on Victoria Street, I don't believe they were required to have any dedicated car share spaces.
No, there's no car share spaces there. I think they they just got the fifty percent.
I don't know if that's been presented to the owner as a an opportunity for making units more attractive. Not my not my business, obviously, but um I do want a a walkable city. I do think that uh the expense of cars on the affordability issue combined with affordability issue of housing, um I'm seeing a lot more people go from a two-car family to a one-car family because they are in the eight hundred thousand dollar house. So the fact that they're managing to um get it all together for that means that there is less money for other things. So um an interesting, a different perspective um look at it, but uh yeah. Think way too far. That would be mine. I meant to on that one. And and I thought it was interesting in the current uh parking um bylaw that um a developer could only have a maximum of two car share units. That's something that I I believe um the negotiation down at the Chamber Building, the Real Town Society, I think I thought they were looking for more units and I thought they were looking for three actually. So don't know how that comes to.
You can have more.
Okay.
Just don't get accounted towards your parking reduction.
Okay, that's that's it then. Thank you. No, you're right.
But. Maybe it is something we wanna explore anyway.
Yeah. And I I also thought the bicycle, one bicycle per unit was also a little high. It'd be great. What about your unit, Mayor? Would you have a, do you need a bicycle parking?
Sorry, I'm I'm lost on when you said one one bicycle parking spot was high. You think it should be less, not more?
Well, there's two numbers. So there's short-term parking and long-term parking. So it's.
The long-term parking for bicycles.
It's one per per multi-unit residential.
Is it a mistake or a preunit? Multi-unit residential.
And then the short-term parking, I forget what it is, but. It's something. So there is a lot of parking. It's definitely more than one per unit. I I don't know what the short-term parking is on that.
I just saw the floor plan for the Nelson Cares building and I'm like, whoa. I am a I am an active transportation person. I want as many people as possible on bikes and walking and and in that location. So if you look at how much is taken up in moving people in a downtown, you know, very urban spot where everything um for an able-bodied person is within a a ten-minute walk. Um then it just seemed like a lot of residential capacity is not being fully utilized.
Oh, so just so I'm clear, so you're suggesting because of its location and access to everything, doesn't need to have one bike parking spot per unit because those people should just walk to the co-op kind of idea.
I I I just don't believe everybody's gonna buy a bike and use it. That's all I say.
I'm supposed to take. Okay.
You know, in in situations where where there um yeah, in uh sorry, in situations, you know, where a developer, even B C Housing doesn't feel like that fits, they can ask for a variance. So you know, that might be a good case for that. What we have found previous to putting in one uh bike stall per unit is that um there wasn't enough bike parking and it created some issues like with Jim Reimer's project. They were.
How many bike stalls are there?
There is very few.
Very few, that's very few.
Yeah, very few. Um and.
It's not point five.
Yeah, and so um this was kind of to address this, but you know, I think you know, anybody can ask for a variance for any of these things and I think that's always an option if it doesn't make sense for their project.
Okay, yeah, I just like that as well. I mean, let's.
So while we're talking about.
Our need is living. It's bedrooms, people to sleep and have a home.
Yes. So while we're talking about parking, this it's interesting that we this would come up today because somebody stopped me on Saturday. Um and while more parking, less parking, where wherever we end up um on this at the end of the day, because I'd see if we're gonna have an issue in Nelson, it's always been parking for for forever. But um somebody that lives in one of the Nelson Cares buildings that has um limited parking um actually um has an opportunity for a job, a better paying job than what they have. Because they also see being in Nelson Cares that they don't, they're thankful that they're there. But they would also at some point maybe want to look at having their own home or to be somewhere else. And they need a car, which they would find some old car probably to be able to drive because they now have to leave town and they have to have reliable transportation to get to a new and better paying job. But the current parking is all being used by staff and there is no parking option for this person. And this person was told, well, park on the park on the street. And it would seem to me that they're like one has to be careful about wishing that nobody needs to have a car because sometimes the cars aren't coming to Nelson, sometimes the cars are leaving Nelson. But I thought it was very interesting. So this is a person that lives there, is very happy to be there um but has children and would hopefully like to get a home at some point and needs a vehicle. And is like, why are all the staff getting the parking spots there? They have better paying job, like why can't I obtain a parking spot there? So be careful, what we wish for is we go down the road of um half a half a car per um unit.
So do we not require a certain amount of parking for the residential versus the commercial?
We do. Um so there'd be a certain amount. Uh commercial, industrial, institutional parking is based on a certain number of stalls per square meters. Um I don't know what the what the office would be in this particular case, but there should be um commercial parking spaces there.
They should not be some residential spots for stuff.
Uh yeah, that would be an issue that, uh you know, if someone put in a complaint, they would investigate and find out what's going on.
Yeah.
Cause there should be commercial and there should be residential parking.
Anyways, just out of the blue, that got stopped and I was informed of that on Saturday and I thought, well, it's not an interesting pixie to be in as we hope to try to always move. You know, we're always we're always trying to think about the hand up, not the hand out. And having reliable transportation could be helpful for an individual.
To make a complaint.
Or just call them up, you know, that might.
For sure.
The um.
Sounds like they did make a complaint.
Yeah, I think I think the question's been asked. Yeah, so. Um I'm just looking at at uh time here. You've got uh six minutes.
Okay.
Um does anybody else have anything more to say about parking? Parking, we could talk about parking for days, but. Okay, I don't see anybody else, so.
But there's some of the bigger, more.
Uh maybe two or three, we could maybe skip over landscaping, I uh but uh the vape stores and payday loans as well as the large format retail. So we could maybe do three minutes for each.
Okay, Councilor Lockenberger has a question.
My recommendation is no to vapes stores, period. And uh um no to payday loans, period. Full stop.
And again, you can ask for a rezon or variance or something, right?
Yeah, and that's and that's something we'll highlight in the large format retail as well as we can prohibit them. And then we can ensure that higher level of public scrutiny through the rezoning process, so.
And just if you wanted to know, we have three vapes, no payday loan stores.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so no payday loans here.
There was.
I asked that question and the cat there, I was told that Castigar is the closest one and so I think we've got enough.
Just to be, just to be clear, the vape one on Baker Street, if they move out and we institute this no vape thing, the new s- store lease. When the lease is up and it's, you can't renew.
It wouldn't be able to be. Yeah.
Wouldn't be able to relocate Nelson and we wouldn't be able to put another one.
Yeah, that's my recommendation.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Councilor Page.
Yeah, I was I my instincts are along the same lines as Lautenberg's here, of course. I was curious uh how where this came from. Uh so you know, in the in where this had lifted from, what was the concern and where did it come from? Uh so I think you probably have a little bit of a preamble. And then I was also curious about there are uh businesses in town that sell these products, but they may not be dedicated to selling um uh those products exclusively. And how does that impact them? Does it mean they're not allowed to sell those products? Is that as far as we can go with our regulations? Because I would probably push in that direction. Or does it mean as long as you're doing something else, they could sell some of these products?
Yeah, so when we're looking at the definition of a vape store, we would put some sort of um parameters in there on what constitutes a vape store. So in other municipalities I've worked in, they've said if fifty percent uh or more of your products are vape-related, you're a vape store. They they were, I think the council there was just kind of trying to find a middle uh ground. Um so you could just simply say if you sell any vape products, you're um a vape store. Although there could be consequences for the gas stations and sort of thing. So I think we would go back and try and find some sort of explain what is a vape store or what is a store, a retail store, like a convenience store that just happens to sell vapes.
Okay, so on this one particularly, payday loads is a little bit more clear-cut for me, but on this I feel like we're gonna have to have some sort of broader conversation as to the impacts we're trying to mitigate, why we're trying to mitigate them. Uh if we're gonna draw a regulation around this, I think it's important and I think we need to have some depth in the subject matter.
Well, I don't think we're making any decisions here tonight because this is a committee of the whole meeting. I think that
Yeah, yeah.
But I think that I I'm I'm sensing, cause you've already said that you're sort of like no more. So we've got some. And we're saying sort of no, and if there's consensus around that, then I think staff have to come back with the.
No, we're tight on time. But what I'm saying is we just bifurcated and say, well, as long as you don't sell fifty percent. And then we have a bunch of locations selling twenty-five percent or forty-five percent of the product is vape. Doesn't actually like if the product is, if the reason is because of the negative health impacts, the impacts on our youth, the impacts on the resource recovery because of how much waste is going into these single-use products, then the real goal is to try and remove them as a sales product, saleable product city. So if we're trying to achieve that, just banning the dedicated vape stores, I don't think gets us there. That's why I think we specifically on the vape stores need to have the vape product line, need to have maybe a longer conversation when we have that conversation. So we have a sense of why we're doing this as council and what stand we're making.
Councilor Penaro.
Is there a precedent for banning the sale of a product that's not legal? It seems like a big.
Yeah, you 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 can. Um the the fine line that you have to walk is that you can't say um you can't say, well, we don't want a certain brand of store. Um maybe I'll pick on Targets since they're not here anymore. You can't say no Target, but you can say um retail stores over a certain size.
Oh, we're talking.
But I'm talking about particular products, like can we say you may not in city limits sell helium balloons? Because they're not illegal.
You you can't. I've seen I've seen it handy.
Yeah, torchlighters. Because torchlighters, they're banned in a lot of places.
Fireworks.
Places have banned fireworks, paper bags, plastic bags.
Okay.
I just was wondering if that's a thing or not. Fireworks is is a good example, yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll do a bit more research too. And then the next steps could also be getting some public engagement um on the vape store payday loan discussion. So we'll get public feedback on that and then we'll look into this more. I think other people have also struggled with vape stores sort of popping up around their town.
I yeah, I agree with with Keith on the point of it, like if every store just sells vape stuff and groceries or vape stuff and baby clothes, then it doesn't really address the problem. As well, just have a vape store because it's the same thing. Um but I definitely agree with the sentiment around the table for sure. Just how we're gonna vote doing it.
I think so. I think you've got the direction from us that this has to come, not with um more information for sure.
And some things to that list, chicken nuggets.
And so. You never got to the workshop on large large format retail stores, but um.
I could be very quick if if you're.
Yeah, cause we're 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 leaving to go to dinner, so this is the.
Yeah, to be.
You're leaving to, okay, I'll be very very quick.
Yeah.
Two or three seconds.
Yeah.
So there's many policies in the O C P to talk about, uh and you know, supporting Baker Street uh sort of thing. Currently right now, anywhere you have commercial zoning, you have a large format retail store or a small format retail store. So we're looking to uh change that so that uh we're not allowing large form format stores as of right. So to ensure a higher level of public and council review, we would uh we would be recommending changing the bylaw to uh require large format stores to go through a zoning process. Rather than what could happen right now, which is the. Rather than what could happen right now, which is the director can approve a a new big box store and council and the public wouldn't really have a say.
So I must approve if it complies with our regulations.
Do it.
Yeah.
It's it's not discretionary.
So
Some discretionary.
Definitely.
Or or kind of like what's the feel of the room?
Yeah, do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, 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 there you go.
Down with the
With you there.
Good.
I didn't wanna make the decision for everybody, I knew earlier.
We're there now.
And within thirty five kilometers.
Skip over line of speech.
Yeah.
Scandalous, I'm hungry apparently.
Really?
Yeah.
Go on your border.
Keith kind of wrote.
Exactly, well, you know, that's what happened most.
Okay, everybody, welcome. And if I could have a motion to reconvene moved by Councilor Weaver, seconded by Councilor Payne, all those in favor and that carries. So, Councilors, the city manager doesn't have anything to report. And Mr. Johnson doesn't have anything to report on his areas this evening. So I'm going to move right into... Are there any councilors that have a short report that they want to give this evening? Wow, no. Counselor, of course, Counselor Payne.
I do. It's been busy times out there, but if we're trying to move through...
Well, we just, you know, I wanted to leave time to make sure that Counselor got... Counselors got the same few words.
Okay, I will speak as clearly and as succinctly as possible. I did go on October 20th, and I believe the general manager and Counselor Woodward were also there as NCO introduced their 15th homelessness report card, which all the councilors have a copy in their mailbox. It is available online from Nelson Cares. They've done an excellent job of making it very succinct. And I know that Counselor Tate worked on the committee to put this together. So thanks for all those efforts. But the numbers are pretty clear. I think it's a really valuable document to look at in our community to really understand what's happened in Nelson over the last 15 years. But more recently, we've seen it in a more significant way. Then just skip down to August 15th, when Nelson Cares held their AGM at the Adventure Hotel. And I just want to mention that Ron Little, the chair of their board, who has been on the Nelson Cares board for 17 years. And I just say that because I'm always really amazed at the generosity of the volunteers in our community and the time and the energy and the expertise they give to keep these organizations running and growing and our community thriving as a result. So he is retiring from the chair. Another notable board event was that Nick Toner, who's also been a long-serving member, has been made a Director Emeritus, so that he will just be on the board as long as he wishes to be contributing in whatever way he would like. Lots of information on their website in that report as well. They are one of the larger employers in Nelson, and they contribute really significantly to our economy, which I think is something that we don't always think about when we hear Nelson cares. Business after business was another one where we're celebrating a milestone as Community Futures has been in operation since 1985. And if you don't know, they've moved their location from one end of what I call the post office building to the other end. I really love going there because as you're walking up the steps to their office, they have all of these photographs on the wall in that stairwell showing the businesses that they've helped to get started and who are really just foundational to what I think of as Nelson. And you can see that yourself at any time. I was also down with Counselor Woodward at Cottonwood Falls as the... I hope I got this right. Azucy Foundation had their Autumn Leaves Celebration. That was a lovely event. But if you haven't been down to Cottonwood Falls at this time of year, the colors, how from the get-go, they must have curated how those red trees turned and the yellow trees intermixed with the green. It's stunningly beautiful. And we were there on a day where it poured rain in the morning, and then as the sun came out, it was just listening. So take an opportunity to treat yourself, to go down. And the falls are pretty much pouring over there as we're getting some rain. Don't miss it. Last but not least, I did go. Last week was Co-op Week, and many of you may know that Nelson has a higher per capita membership in co-ops than just about anywhere in B.C. I believe we are the highest, and maybe in Canada. There's a few European countries who have it over us, but we still have a pretty significant... So all of those folks were out last night to screen a film about the benefits and the values of co-ops and how they really contribute to our community. And there's another group of organizations. If you go right from the Nelson District Critic Union to the Co-op, to KCR, what they put back into the community monetarily. Osprey Foundation was also there as a big support. But how they feed the money back into the community for neighborhoods, for not-for-profits, and for all of the good work that's done. So it was a pretty impressive week last week to see the strength of the ties that hold us together so much. But I just really believe there are so many good people working on those challenges that it's going to be good. We're going to keep Nelson weird. So that's what I was up to. A few other more business-like meetings, but they'll pop up in agendas and minutes elsewhere.
Anybody else? Counselor Page.
You're on the advisory session too. Yeah, I just wanted to... There wasn't much of the R.D. that had significant impact in terms of updating. Of course, they received our letter on the withdrawal of the G.I.S. services and budgeting for and preparing for that inevitability in a couple of years. Woodward, of course, was at Joint Resource Recovery, so I'll leave that update for him. And we did a genetic course. Kate is the leader of that. And then a bunch of us, Woodward and Kate and Mayor and ourselves, did a business walk on Baker Street on Friday, went and surveyed various sections of town and talked to all the proprietors about how business is doing and how the area is working and where their challenges are. And the data will all get compiled in the coming weeks as more of those surveys come in. And we will get a report certainly from the Chamber of Commerce on that. But it was a really important effort just to kind of take some of the conversations that we have here around the table and around other tables and walk and talk and see what the challenges are for our fellow small business proprietors in town. You learned a lot, I'm sure.
Counselor Tate. Thanks. Greater Nelson Economic Development met to set the strategic priorities for the next year and looking forward to see how those come out in the minutes.
Great. Counselor Payne.
Well, I was going to ask a question of the city manager after his report, so I'll just flag it. Because the question I was going to ask you was at the... Our local conference in April, we saw a speaker talk about newsletters, and I wondered where we were at on the city newsletter. So as I was arriving here today, I got an email asking me if I wanted to sign up for the city newsletter. So I immediately did, and that is out and available. If you didn't get an email, just go to the city website. I think it'll be a really great tool for having a lot of the information that we're sending out in various different forms at various different times in one monthly location so that it can come to your email box. You can scan it, highlight it, see if there's anything there for you, or just hit the delete button. Certainly up to you. But I think it'll really be a valuable tool for letting the community know what's happening. And I'm sure there'll be different mechanisms for feedback from the community within that newsletter. So that was going to be one of my questions for your report, but since you already moved that forward, thank you very much. I look forward to receiving the first edition.
Counselor Woodward.
So just Joint Resource Recovery. It was pretty standard stuff. A lot of it was they're replacing their rolling fleet, new trucks, which are very expensive. So we talked about capital reserves. And I think they're working on that idea that they have capital reserves to purchase new vehicles, and then they start building the capital reserve again, which I've seen really great success here with that process. We talked... There was actually some really interesting stuff about waste in terms of like mattresses, which are actually like, you know, they're just standard, but they're a huge problem in the waste stream. And so there was this really good discussion around having to deal with that. And also, there's this whole idea of a plastics registry. They want... Which the board kind of came to the agreement that it's much easier to do in a very large centers. Much harder to do a plastic registry in waste streams on a large scale because it's quite a big investment for... Really is a very small amount of plastic ultimately. So that was a... So, you know, they're almost... Do we need a carve-out for smaller locations? How are we going to deal with plastic registry? Is it going to be across the region? Does each location transportation have to deal with it? So it was a good discussion on that. But most of it was just service-based and dealing with rolling fleet. And that's about it.
Thank you. Counselor Panero.
I'll be super fast, just in respect for people needing to do their thing. But on Sunday, I was lucky enough to go to a fundraiser that I was invited to, put on by Nelson for Palestine. It was in the Booster Dance Studio above Baker Street. And it was like a pop-up thrift store that they organized. There was hundreds and hundreds of people there. And in less than four hours, they raised $5,000. It was pretty impressive to see the support from the community. And what stood out to me is that, you know, we have a huge capacity here for action when given the opportunity to take action. And what I heard from many, many people while I was there was just they were so thankful for that opportunity. The world can seem a very dismal place sometimes, and a lot of people are paralyzed by, you know, the scale of it. And so it was just nice to see the community come together in that way and make a meaningful difference. The money goes to Islamic Relief. There's a couple of orphans in the West Bank that they're sponsoring. And so it's going to real people in real time and making a huge difference for those two people, as well as a portion of it went to the Autonomists Tonight here in town. I think we're talking about colonialism and genocide in other countries, and the need to recognize the effects of those same things here at home. So all in all, just a huge shout-out to all the people that volunteered and put so much of their time into that. It was great.
Thanks. So not to repeat, because I've been to a few of the things that people have mentioned here, but I do want to acknowledge that today I got the first poppy presentation for the season from Bill Hare, the president of the Legion, who happens to be in the back. So it's something that we do every year at the beginning of the poppy campaign. And just so everybody knows, that poppies will become available to the public on the last Friday of the month, which this sure happens to be October the 31st. But starting then, you can start wearing your poppies. But I'm sporting my poppy that President Hare gave me this morning as the first poppy of the season here in Nelson. So on that note, we will continue on. And next up is our cultural presentation. So maybe everybody wants to come into the room while I talk. So Tapatia Collective is a community-based initiative dedicated to building bridges across cultures through the medium of dance performance. Drawing on background in ballet, contemporary, and traditional Mexican dance, the collective's programs will foster community participation, artistic mentorship, and intercultural dialogue. Through accessible workshops, public performances, and collaborative projects, the collective will offer new avenues for residents of all ages to experience dance as both an art form and as a vehicle for community connection. So Joy has a few more things to tell us.
Tapatia Collective proudly celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month by sharing two iconic pieces that honor the richness and diversity of Latin culture, one from Mexico and another from Panama. This presentation invites everyone to experience the beauty, rhythm, and stories that shape Hispanic identity and tradition. Based in Nelson, Tapatia Collective is dedicated to keeping Latin heritage alive and creating a welcoming space where people of all backgrounds can connect, celebrate, and learn together through the universal language of dance.
So just before you start, do you have enough room? Like, we could move this one table here aside a little bit more and then maybe move these chairs that... Where people sit to speak was out of the way. We're a small spot when you come into dance. We want to make sure that you have enough room. Okay.
Step it up.
Someone go round there.
Yep.
Wow. Please come back. Please come back in the room.
Come on back in.
Come on back in. Oh, they have another dance? Okay.
These are two.
Ay! Oh ho ho, ay ome. Oh ho ho, ya. Oh ho ho, ita. Ah na 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 na. No hay patria como la mía.
Okay, now, can everybody come back in? And please, like, everybody behind you there really enjoyed it too, so. Thank you. So, yes, it was wonderful to have you here this evening and it just, I think it put a bit of joy in everybody's step for this evening and it's it's wonderful and and hopefully um Joy can arrange to have you come back and we wish you all the the best. So once again, Tapatia Collective and thank you so much for bringing some joy to our council chambers this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
I want everyone to kinda move back.
Or if they're comfortable where they are. So next up, just so people know, it's public participation and I know that there's numbers from the Legion who's gonna come forward to um that wants to participate and then um Brenton, I see you in the corner. Anything tonight from you?
I'm here with hospice, so.
Oh, okay, okay. So then, I didn't catch gentlemen's name, I'm sorry. If you wanna make your way up to a seat here at the front, that would be great. Yep, one, two, however many of you would like to come up. This has been such a nice lively evening. Um, normally we restrict this to three um minutes, but because we don't have anybody else, I will allow you um five minutes this evening. So whenever you're ready, it's public participation time, so the the, oh, I'm supposed to read something. Gosh. I'm just so excited about the uh the dancing that my apologies, because somebody would be calling, I'd be getting an email tomorrow morning to say that I didn't read out the rules. So, City Council welcomes comments from the public on issues it is dealing with or other issues of interest to the public. Before speaking, please state your name and area of residence, city, or R D C K. Comments from the public will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, but we're gonna give you five tonight. This is not the forum for complaints, which are dealt with by staff through the established complaint procedure. Council will not make any decisions at this meeting about the matter you raise, but may refer the matter to staff for follow-up. Speakers must not address topics that relate to matters for which a public hearing must be held prior to council's consideration of the matter or adoption of the bylaw. Speaker shall address all comments through the mayor or presiding member. And then just please avoid clapping or displaying any emotional responses, as such actions will not be permitted. Maintaining composure, composed demeanor ensures that all opinions shared can be heard in a setting that is unbiased as possible. Okay, now, I've read the rulebook. Now over to you.
Uh, I'm a Chief Pater Officer, Second Class, Michael Anderson, retired, along with uh Master Warrant Officer, Second Class. Um, Jerry Hayes, uh, we're here as a part of a nonprofit, uh Egress Nonprofit, Egress Society Nonprofit, our veterans, our veterans, along with the Legion, uh supporter from the Legion um for the consideration of uh free parking for veterans on the basis of uh recognition and honor of uh sacrifices made by the Canadian military, um, and then support veterans' uh well-being, uh free parking will help veterans, uh particularly those with uh service-related injuries, a lot with mental and uh physical, um, a lot of appointments uh throughout the day at different times. We have to move and park and move and park. A lot of us can't uh have to come to town with our own vehicles other than uh transit. Financial relief, uh, as we have have small pensions and um the regiving affairs in Germany doesn't help uh relieve uh certain things. Uh foreign medical points, although they pay for those medical appointments, uh it's not, um we don't get uh financial relief for such parking and to realign with other provincial municipalities that allow it. Um, free parking for veterans, uh, yeah, um. That's it. That's my five minutes.
I think you only took like two and a half, but that's okay. That's okay too.
And we we do, we appreciate the uh consideration of the of the council and uh what the City of Nelson has worked with and other things that I've seen tonight. Um, I do thank you and appreciate your time on the matter.
Thank you. Okay. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for coming um from the back there to support your colleague.
It's a long way.
Yeah. And don't feel, and I always say, don't don't feel obligated to stay, but you might be very interested in hearing um our next delegation, which is the Nelson Hospice Society, which is a volunteer um group here in town. Or if you want to recuse, you can just go out at whenever you feel that you would like to leave.
Can you hear me? Okay, um, my name is Jane DeJocmo. I'm the Executive Director for Nelson District Hospice Society. I'm also a resident of Nelson, living in Uphill.
I'm Lonnie Fekina. I'm the Chair of the Board at the Nelson District Hospice Society and I live in Fairview.
Yeah, and um we also have Brenton Ratty, who's our uh one of our board members here as well, supporting us this evening. Um, so we just really wanted to um come to the city to really give you a very brief update of what we've been doing in town, uh what our activities are, just to make sure that everybody's aware. We're we're really focused this year on bringing awareness to our large community of everything that we do and uh keeping you updated. Um, and especially as we receive funding from you. Thank you very much, through our community investment program, so we wanna keep you apprised of everything that we are doing and how our society is growing. Um, so first I just wanna mention that in twenty twenty-seven, we will be celebrating our fortieth anniversary as an organization that's been doing hospice work in Nelson. Uh, we originally formed around a kitchen table with a bunch of people who said that people shouldn't die alone and started at a grassroots community of people to sit with folks at the bedside. And from there, um, we've grown tremendously and um now we are at a stage where we are providing all the following services. Um, we provide one-on-one visiting with palliative clients, people who are at the end of life as well as vigil support for palliative clients, so people who are dying alone in hospital or at home, we provide as much overnight support as we can in those last few days of life. And we also s- provide navigation support for both people who are palliating with serious illness and their families. In addition to that, that's one segment. Another segment is we provide grief support. So we support anybody who is grieving the death of a human being through our one-on-one supports. And right now, we have over thirty clients in Nelson receiving one-on-one grief supports through our trained grief support volunteers. As well as group grief support, um, which currently we are um working in two different groups that support thirteen people as well as have, we have like kind of a running waiting list of people who are always waiting to hear about new groups. And there's forty people on that list who are receiving information about our groups and join in when they can or when there's a topic of interest to them. Um, and we received additional support from a private donor this year to be able to double our group grief support services because there's been so much of a need for that in our community. In addition to that, about a little over five years ago, we started the West Cootney Caregiver Support Program, which some of you may have heard about, which is a regional program that's based, Nelson is the hub, but we serve the entire West Cootney Boundary Region through coordinators. It's a United Way-funded program that supports um anybody who is supporting a senior at home. They don't have to be palliative, so these are just seniors who have complex frailty or other illnesses. And these caregivers are on a long-term journey of caregiving uh unpaid for their loved ones. And we support the caregiver, so the caregiver in this program is at the center of the circle of care as opposed to the care recipient who might be getting services elsewhere, but we are supporting the caregivers through that program. And we have over seventy-five clients um taking advantage of those supports in both a one-on-one context with volunteers as well as in groups. Um, in addition to that, uh we are doing a lot of community work. So we do advanced care planning work. So we help people complete their advanced care plans, which is a very important part of maintaining one's uh healthcare planning and maintaining agency over one's healthcare. Um, right now, we are in the midst of teaching a four-session course with Learning in Retirement with over twenty-four people in that course, learning about how to do their own advanced care plans. Um, and in addition to doing that kind of community-based form of advanced care planning support, we also work with people one-on-one, even if they're not ill. Just people who wanna actually go through the process of doing their advanced care plans. They can come to us and have a couple of sessions with our trained volunteers to complete those advanced care plans. Uh, and in the community realm, we are also doing um death cafes, which we, the same private funder who's helping us increase our grief supports funded this as well for community death cafes, which help allow uh allow community members to come together and and bring this concept of talking about death and grief out of the closet because it's something as a culture we're not generally very good at. So we had our last, our first one last week and it was really well-attended. And we have three more planned from now until the end of March. So we have twenty volunteers in Nelson that are mainly doing this work, which is not a large number considering the amount of people we're serving. And we also have fourteen volunteers on the East Shore, so we do have a branch on the East Shore doing this work. But to fund all of this, we are getting funding from, you know, basically uh three main sources. Interior Health, Interior Health funds less than forty-five thousand dollars a year for Nelson Hospice to do all this work. Um, United Way is only directed towards funding this caregiver support program. So everything else that we do has to come through community donations and grants, like the C I P grant that we get from um Nelson and other communities. Um, that funds two full-time equivalents in our work, you know, employees and then um another point-five uh F T E to cover um the East Shore and the admin work of the organization. So it's very bare bones, it's very uh lean, we're a very lean organization. So like I said, these volunteers, people like Lonnie, Brenton, and others are the the heart really of our organization and what we do. Um, we are also really focused on covering gaps. That's been something, that's something that came up in our strategic planning last year and the way we've been working with that over the last year and a half really is um trying to reach people who are most vulnerable in our community. And I know you mentioned, uh, Council Penney mentioned NCO. And so we've worked a little bit on trying to make sure that nobody who is vulnerably housed or unhoused in our community is falling through the gaps in terms of getting uh appropriate palliative care. So we've been working with Nelson Cares and Interior Health um and social workers and primary care networks and things like, people like that to try to make sure that they have a location for care, which is the biggest challenge. What is the location gonna be for care for somebody who is unhoused or vulnerably housed? And of course, Nelson Cares is doing amazing work trying to open up spaces for that to happen. And we are working in those spaces. So our volunteers are going and supporting people in those spaces. Uh, but one area that's really been open to people sliding through or falling through the cracks is grief support for people who are vulnerably housed or unhoused. Because they don't fit into our model of making appointments and coming and meeting with people. It just, it just doesn't work. We've tried it and it doesn't, it doesn't happen. So about a year and a half ago, we started our pop-up grief support. And I know um Mayor Morrison, you've seen it on the street. I I happened to hear an anecdote about that, but um bi-weekly, we are on Baker Street uh interfacing with people, providing hot food and drinks, um and advertising our support right there on the spot. So anybody can walk up to where we are set up and and start talking about a grief issue that they're experiencing. And our volunteers who are working in that bi-weekly support are seeing between ten and fifteen people every time and they're only there for for how long?
Two hours.
Two hours. So Brenton and Lonnie and Lee's, uh, three of our board members have been really instrumental in making sure that this happens every other weekend. It's been going on for a year and a half. It's been really successful. And it's also successful in doing just general outreach, because we have community members who just stop by and say, oh yeah, I wanna tell my story too. And so we we get to do a lot of really great work in very short snippets at the pop-up grief support. So stop by if you see us on the street. Um, I, and the last thing I wanted to talk about is what is the future? Uh, what do we see as our future in our community? And we know that in the master plan that the city talked about um providing space for hospice, and we weren't quite sure what that meant, but it did align a little bit with what we do see as our future, which is we would love to have a permanent home in Nelson. Right now, we are renting space from the Community First Health Co-op, which is a wonderful co-op to be a member of, um and we do have an office there, which is great. Uh, but it doesn't have any space for our programs. Um, it doesn't have enough space for all of our staff. We kind of rotate through our offices. Um, and it doesn't have any space really for our clients. And so our vision of the future would be a hospice house. And I know you've heard, oh, hospice residential care, it's come through and failed in Nelson, but this is more of the concept of having a permanent home for hospice services in Nelson. A place where we could have our offices, we could have programming space for all of our grief groups for bringing back the day hospice program, which we have not been able to re-resurrect because of, a lot of it is because of space. Um, and also for dealing with families and friends who come in to support those who are vulnerable, seniors living in places like Kiwanis who only have a tiny little room and don't have anyone else to support them. And even if they did, they have no way to stay when they come and support their loved ones. So what we envision is a place that would have a suite that would be available by donation to a family that's vulnerable in that way to use while their loved one is palliating. So um we just want to start spreading that vision around the community. And I, you know, we've seen properties that have come and gone and we thought, oh, that would be a good one, ooh, that would be a good one. So um, we are very interested in seeing something like that come to reality. We know that Interior Health is not gonna fund this. They will not fund separate palliative care beds outside of the facilities that they own. So we have two beds now dedicated up at the new healthcare facility and two flex beds that aren't always available, but that could be available at Mountain Lakes. But lots of these folks that I'm talking about who are vulnerable wouldn't ever take up those spaces. They don't trust the system enough to move into a facility like that and get palliative care. So the idea would be to make it more homey, more friendly to people who have distrust and issues with the system, uh but can still receive care there. So that is part of our overall vision for the future. Um, as well as being, like I said, a place for programming, a place for clients to come and do one-on-one visits with volunteers. and do one-on-one visits with volunteers, access our library and resources. So yeah, we would love to have that vision shared by others in, within the city and for the city, if, if you are indeed thinking about spaces for hospice in your master planning, that, that be something that be considered and that we would love to partner on in the city. So, yeah.
Questions, Counselor Ward?
Thank you. Through the chair. So other organizations in town have done similar things, like kids, women, etc.
Like a house, is that right?
Like a house? I'm curious, how do they, you know, how they pull off?
No, I mean, you know, our goal is to try to leverage some major donor. That's really what we would be looking for. And we do have some hints, I guess you could say, of future large bequests, but as with all bequests, you never know and you don't wish them to really come true. But if they did, that could be one way of directing that kind of funding is to say, okay, we're ready to invest in this as a long-term home for hospice. But we don't have that kind of funding right now. But I'm only assuming that if they were renting space, that they were using, you know, continuing flow of grant funding and fundraising and, you know, it is not, that is not an easy task to pull off.
Right.
And we know the Cootney Kids ended up having to move out of that house because it wasn't feasible.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess my just query would be asking other organizations like that, like how do they do the falls, what worked? And just kind of see if like, maybe you could find some kind of pathway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Elsewhere, is there any further questions? Okay, seeing that, I want to thank both of you, Jane and Lonnie, for, for coming in. And it was great, I had some friends in from Vancouver that were visiting and got to walk by the pop-up outside of Jerks there two weeks ago. And it was great to see. And I want to say that I talked, as we did the swing around the corner and Richie and I said, did you go over for some chili? I think you guys were serving chili or some kind of like stew there. And, oh, and he said, yeah, he got it. And he said, it was good. So comes up from.
High praise, high praise.
From Rich on the, on the corner there. So, you know, great work that you're doing in our community. You didn't mention the wind farm. It's still on, it's still on my list.
We were told not to mention it.
No, I know, probably we turned, so I'm going to mention it so that you don't have to. But it's on my list and there's no line through it yet in my list of all the things that have been talked about, at least while I've been sitting around the table. And yeah, as we continue to move on on that and do our parks plan, it's, it's not a forgotten thing, just so you know that.
I appreciate that. And I, I wasn't going to bring it up because I was told not to, but since you did. We did spend an hour consulting with your cemetery master plan consultant. And gave her tons of input on, on how we see the wind farm fitting in with the city's vision for the cemetery. So we hope that'll come soon. We've got the funding, we've got the materials, we've got the people, we're ready.
So just, just so you know, I just want to let you know that it's not off the list. I see Lonnie periodically, I should probably, you know, I don't like to always talk about like work.
And I just want to say that I'll be sitting in front of the co-op on Thursday between one and four selling raffle tickets. So if you're around, please come and buy some raffle tickets.
To benefit hospice.
Really inexpensive.
Oh, and the workathon, yeah. Also, Sunday is the workathon. So we'll be out in the community working on people's, seniors and disabled people's yards.
Yeah, I saw that, the sign up to help rake up the leaves, that's excellent. Counselor Payne, and then I just had one other question, yeah.
And I, I was also at your country's capital.
Oh, great.
Which was near the pack.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was full. I was just so, yeah, impressed that you had, so I hope that was successful.
It was.
Looked like, yeah, I, I had the feeling from that. So congratulations on, on that because that's not easy, always easy to pull off. So well done, you did an excellent job.
And one last question, not that we should monetize everything, but you are a nonprofit-registered charity, so members of the community who did want to write a check would be eligible for a tax receipt.
Absolutely.
Right, I think that's always something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
Because sometimes you get those bigger donations than like five dollars in the, in the kitty.
That's right. Yeah, no, we, we, we provide tax receipts, of course. They can make donations with a credit card online through our website or by even just e-trans. So we are very open to receiving all support from the community. It's a big part of how we do our work.
So once again, thank you very much for coming in and updating us on all of your wonderful activities that you're doing in the community.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have, uh, city administration is doing an update on city-owned property lease rental policy. So Sophia Mountford, the Legislative Assistant in Administration, is going to provide an update to council on upcoming updates to the city-owned properties lease rental policy. The presentation will provide an overview of key changes, including a transparent process for lease advertisement and application, criteria and panel used in reviewing lease applications, and introducing a new fee structure to allow for market rate rental fees for business and service, services buildings such as 310 Ward Street. So, over to you, Sophia.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for your attention this evening while we discuss the city-owned property lease and rental policy. So a number of the items this evening are going to be to provide council with information on plan changes. There's also a number of items that, where we're looking for your consideration and would appreciate any direction that you choose to provide as we move through the presentation. So a bit of background and context on the policy first off. That image I have there, that's the entirety of the current policy. It was approved back in two thousand, so it's been in place without review for twenty-five years now. It's quite a simplified policy. It lacks some transparent guidance on lease administration, which we could use currently. So we are looking to bring forward some changes to the policy coming up here. I just want to put it in some wider context before we dive into the specific changes. So one of them is council has received information about the need for upcoming significant investment in facilities. So there has been a deficit in annual maintenance. And there are a variety of agreements that are in place right now. And they vary based on the background of the building, how it came to be a city-owned property, which organization is in there, there's a lot of background that's developed over time with each of these buildings, which means that they have a range of maintenance arrangements, which go from the organization is entirely responsible, the city is entirely responsible, and then some gray areas in the middle. There are some of those situations that have been working really well for the city and for the organizations. And there's other ones where some things have been slipping through the cracks, underinvestment or maybe significant funds haven't been set aside for works that's needed. Or just the organization that's in there is fully responsible and lacks the organizational capacity for doing major upgrades, which might be required. And not an organization that does a lot of that work there, focused in recreation or culture and doing large upgrades is just not in their wheelhouse. Another part of the context is this, obviously, a lot of these properties fit into the context of recreation in the city, which has been a big topic recently. There's been feedback flying around, there's a need for multipurpose spaces to meet a variety of activity preferences, that there's underutilization of existing spaces or just that there's a need to make space for more groups to have a space to operate. So I wanted to keep those in the front of people's minds while we move through the presentation here. So we're planning on taking kind of a phased approach to this. There's a few things which we have listed in phase one that administration needs to have in place in the short term to be able to actively start using it. So some of those things are, currently, there's one fee structure and we are proposing moving to separate that into two classes of buildings. One that operates on business and services, so that's going to be mostly office buildings. And City Hall is the primary one that fits into that category. And then the other type is assembly-type buildings, which would cover recreation, cultural, social spaces, any kind of community programming spaces. And that will allow us to have a bit more nuance to how we're setting fees. Another change is with the vacation of the Civic Center small gym by the Dance Umbrella, city's been receiving significant interest in leasing that space when it is ready to be leased. And the current policy doesn't provide staff with any guidance on how we should be advertising that, taking applications, reviewing applications, what our guiding principles should be in selecting the correct organization to go into that space. With that space becoming available in the short term, we would look to have these changes approved in the short term so that we can start using it. But this policy obviously fits into a bigger context and we know that there are other changes that are needed in this policy. Currently, assessed value is used as the main proxy for market rate or how we choose to set the rents. So we'll be looking for input on, council input on that. We also would like to discuss lease subsidy, how it's currently happening and what it could look like in the future, and that topic of capital investment. So first off, so business and services buildings, so primarily office spaces. Currently, the policy just says that it would be eight percent of the assessed value and it also sets a minimum, which I wouldn't go below. In the short term, we propose leaving that in place, but with the recognition that we need a better way to do market value for City Hall in particular. So we have a number of new leases coming up in this building with space being available on the fifth floor. So we've actually already gone to three different realtors to get their input on what a fair market rate would be for this building. And we're proposing that we would have this put into the policy so that we can use that as a way to set rent for City Hall moving forward. We also recognize that with long-term leases, where we set the rate at the start of the lease and that rolls over for five years, ten years, we have no way to account for inflation currently. So we'd like to include in the policy that there would be an inflationary increase or where it's based on assessed value, that this would be recalculated annually. That would help smooth the lease increase over time. We wouldn't get these sharp increases that we are seeing when people come to renew the leases in five or ten years' time and the assessed value is looking quite different than when they first came into the lease. And then the last one that we'll be looking to include for this is including the current parking rates that we're charging for spaces at City Hall. This is something that's already in place, particularly for provincial leases right now, but it's not something that's documented, it's not transparent. So we would like to have that included in the policy.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Through the chair. Built into the pricing, would it also be sort of the, the, the capital projects that need to happen on the building, would you, would you build that into the pricing? Or is that kind of just separate, we deal with that? Or does the pricing help deal with the capital projects that need to happen over the next ten years?
I mean, currently, there have been operations and maintenance fees. The province has been the main leaseholder in this building, so they've been kind of come into play over however many years that the province has been here. Those don't typically capture capital expenses. I know there have been some cost-sharing agreements that have come in for like the big-ticket items. Obviously, like the province has been a really long-term leaseholder and that's appropriate maybe in those kinds of settings. For shorter-term leaseholders, that's something that's.
I also think that in some of the city-owned buildings, that's part of the, we call them O and M fees. So whether it's a capital project or not, it really is all over the place about who is responsible for that. Is it us or is it the leasie, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah. So, yeah, when we negotiated this original lease, there, there was a provision that the province would pay for capital expenditures, larger ones. So that was built into this original lease. And it depends what, like, if you're renting off a typical landlord, you know, their rent is set so that they can, you know, create, you know, fund to do that as part of their, normally the, the building owner's responsibility. So they, they try to set rents that they're earning enough that they can invest in their building and maintain their building and make a profit off that. So if we move to more of a market rent, then, then that fee that you charge should, should cover capital expenditures as, as well down, down, you know, on that rent. O and M is meant to generally cover, you know, the ongoing operating, your janitorial, your lights and power and all those sorts of things. But your market rent should have that space to, you know, to cover that. And as identified, you know, right now, we're using a proxy for market, which, which may or may not really reflect markets. So I think, you know, is to move more to a market rent time on these buildings that we, that we, you know, this, this was meant to be a revenue-generating building, not, not, this was, that's what the, you know, when we chose to buy this at the time, it was to generate positive rents to, you know, to support the city as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Page?
Unless you have more on the business services side, I don't know.
Nope, this is the only slide on business and services, yeah.
I'm curious, in the contemplation of business services in that we're aiming for market rents, fair market value, in our other, our current lease, we talk about how we support the nonprofits or how we support the nonprofits. Do we have a portion of what the market fair value might be? I'm sure we're talking about the purpose-built spaces, that's going to be pretty strongly. Is there contemplation in this building, as an example, of, of a portion that we might set aside for cultural good? There's already tenants in here that aren't necessarily maybe renting for fair market value specifically because they're, they're providing more of a social good, but maybe there's a portion of five percent of the square footage or something that we might contemplate within a market-generating, revenue-generating building for the purpose of, of social goods. We just heard from a presenter talking about that, that potentially would be a, a kind of organization we'd want to incorporate in mix it. So this is a question, have we thought of doing that versus just pure revenue generating?
I think you'll have to look at that in the context of all the facilities we own and the.
Yeah, no.
And what we, yeah, what we have. So right now, this is contemplated as, you know, a revenue-generating building. You know, and we still have a significant shortfall in capital maintenance. So, you know, I think one of the prime perks, how do we get the best use of our spaces? We know that we, especially on special-use spaces, that, you know, they're being used for one purpose for one period of time.
Yeah, we'll cover that when we get there.
Right, so, so right now, I'd just say, you know, that's a larger concept. You know, we're going to look at what that, you know, capital maintenance is, is even some of those assembly buildings. Are they, are we looking at them contributing to that as well? And I think you just need to look at it in the mix when you have it all full information.
So the question though is that we are contemplating within, like within these classes that we're creating?
Not in the, not in these, not in the, this set of.
All right.
This class of.
Yeah, another option is, you know, you have your market lease rates. If it's a service you want to support, then there's other ways to do that. Maybe there's some kind of granting or something like that. But that makes it a little more transparent of, here's the cost. And if there's, you know, we provide grants to the capital and to the museum and that type of thing. So just separate the two.
And we'll come to that kind of concept, like we would like to discuss like lease subsidy or, you know, the, well, we'll come to it shortly because we do have nonprofit moving into this building. We were proposing that they would fall under this fee structure and it would be more based on the occupancy of the building, that they would be finding a market rate lease in an office elsewhere and this is an office kind of building. But there might be another mechanism for them to recapture a portion of that rent from the city if it was something that council supported.
Okay.
So yeah, then the second type of building would be this assembly-type building, which is the majority of the inventory that the city has. So it would be recreation, cultural, social and community. Currently, this is using the same kind of market value proxy, the assessed value. There are some limitations that we'd like to acknowledge with the use of assessed value. B C assessment doesn't necessarily. Um B C Assessment doesn't necessarily use the same rigor in assessing city buildings. Um but B C Assessment is looking at assessing for taxation purposes and the city being exempt from that. Um it may be that it's not the best proxy that could be used. Um and um staff um could look into other proxies for that that could be more appropriate in the future.
Ask a question?
Yep.
Do we just need to petition B C Assessment to, do you need to challenge our assessments more often with B C Assessment? It's a process.
I think, Chris, I know that Colin McClure looked into this with B C Assessment. Has had ongoing conversations with B C Assessment on how they assess municipal buildings, um and it is a process.
Okay.
Well, and it's like how they assess market is, you know, what are your lease um revenues from that building? And if we subsidize all the lease revenues, then the value is gonna be based on an artificially low amount, so it's kind of a. Yeah, it's, it doesn't really lend itself for.
I get it, I get it.
Probably not a lot of comparators too for some of these buildings.
It's basically based on what we're setting it based on. Yeah, thanks.
And um in the current policy, um this is where we start seeing that subsidy for nonprofits. So um the assessed value for an assembly building would be eight percent for a commercial entity. We don't currently have any commercial groups in our um assembly-type buildings. Um but um we don't know what might happen in the future and we can consider whether that's still appropriate. Obviously, without providing any assistance to business, so that one's still set at around a market value. Um and then here we have nonprofits paying at five percent compared to the eight percent um for renting buildings.
Counselor Page.
When we're looking at those classifications, one of the things that stands out for me is how recreation separated private versus public access accessible groups. Like we're making really the issues between commercial and nonprofit, but maybe one of the considerations we wanna look at is is your, is the use open to the public? Is there public programming? Can anyone join or is it just something that's a closed group that you can't really get into? There is no public programming that goes along with that, that's more of a deterministic factor that drives whether or not you're getting a preferred rate or not.
Yeah, we can take that, yeah. Um and while we're discussing subsidized rates, um there are also leases in place historically. Which provide a varying amount of support to different organizations. That ranges from um organizations which have a nominal lease for a dollar, which has been in place for um a number of years. Um and other organizations which receive below market rate outside of this structure, there's a very small number of those still. But there are um a not insignificant number of groups which receive nominal leases. Um these kind of leases um kind of fly under the radar in terms of the support that the city is providing to those groups. And I think there are a lot of very valuable organizations that are receiving that support. Um but um you could look to propose a a different way of um framing that. Where the lease um would have the market rate or the subsidized rate in it, whichever that was. Um but the group could apply to council or to staff um to receive subsidy up to a hundred percent. Or at a percent that was agreed upon, um that would give council oversight of which groups um when receiving that. So that there could be a consistent approach um to which types of groups were receiving that support. And it would also give um oversight of the level of financial support that the city is providing through this in-kind support to groups. Um it would be a process to gradually move over the current leaseholders onto this um setup if we chose to go down that route. A lot of these leases are ten, fifteen years, um so it wouldn't be something that could happen straight away. Um but it could be something that would provide um a more process for organizations to understand how to get support.
Counselor Payne.
Are these leases outside of the current service agreements we have?
Um these are, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, all have been negotiated, like for example Touchstones when their NMEG or um when that, you know. Um when the city made the deal to uh for them to take over that building and they raised capital to do the leaseholds. And you know, that those were tended to be those type of leases is is and they were, you know, responsible for their capital upgrades. And all those sorts of things, so each of them have a, you know, a history to them, you know. South Creek College is a good example, you know, that, you know, council the day wanted to see, you know, post-secondary, back-endary community. And and really council sort of facilitated um that happening by um entering into this lease, borrowing the money. And getting that repaid, so all of them will have a reason why, they're they're not typically, we had this space and we're leasing, trying to lease it out to. You know, uh you know, go out to the community and say what kind of, you know, we have this space, what what kind of um activities or what would you do? And then they tend to be, someone was looking for a, you know, council was trying to facilitate a, you know, something in the community.
So supplemental, I guess, I don't think I asked that question properly then, so that's what I was alluding to. I thought we had a service agreement with NMEG which covered that.
Yeah, we have a a lease agreement with NMEG, um the service.
And we do have a service agreement now with NMEG, um so that came in.
Relating to the grant that we provide, not the lease that we have with them. So there's two things, there's the lease, right, which is leasing the building.
Yeah.
And then there's a service agreement, you know, what um.
That also deals with a grant towards.
No, the grant is is, there's a grant to that organization to.
I don't understand it, so I'll get more information and then I'll, so those organizations that have those service agreements then are going to be, I know. Are going to be included in this whole lease process then, okay. I thought the service agreement had sort of taken care of that, so now we're going back on this.
What grant council is providing to them and, you know, whether that would increase annually.
That's what I mean, that's just my misunderstanding of what's included in that, so.
Separately, they have a lease that says.
Getting it now.
Here's what your responsibility is, it's NMEG's a dollar a year for, and they're responsible for a whole bunch of upgrades in that building. And I know they present saying, you know, your grant, we pay, you know, the O and M and all the stuff on our buildings. But that's them choosing to say here's how they use the money that council gives them. There's nothing in the lead here, in that service agreement says you must use it for these five things.
And they go out and get the grants to do a lot of those capital improvements that.
In that, in that model, yeah, like the Capitol Theater is a good example, someone that's done this really.
Some amazing things in there that that have benefited that building for the city and the residents.
Yeah.
Without costing the city, so that's.
Yeah, yeah.
An interesting, yeah.
And some do it well and and um some, we have all this deferred maintenance because they haven't and that, that's the. The spectrum we're we're trying to figure out how to best do that.
Okay, I already talked about a lot of this, um so this was about the subsidized process. Okay, so the next um topic that we wanted, this, this is um kind of a bigger picture, longer-term discussion. Um uh we are planning on bringing a policy forward in the short term. And I don't think that the policy we bring to you will fully address this, um there's still research being done with the facilities. Um yeah, with the, yeah, facilities research to understand kind of the scale of um. Investment that's needed and how much of this may be required to come through leases or other mechanisms. Um but um. Uh staff is looking for council input on um whether um leaseholders could be expected to. Um contribute towards um capital works in these buildings, um what considerations there should be. Um like we have some longer-term leases, fifteen, twenty years, and we also have um shorter-term leases, one year, three years. Um which could obviously have a bearing on the level of um contribution that could be expected from these organizations.
Counselor Ward.
You can hear him. Um well, considering what we heard at the facilities workshop, um I don't think we have fifteen or twenty years. So like we're, some of our buildings are really in need now, uh yesterday actually. So um worries me a bit here is that, like I don't wanna rely on this too much. Because this, these are a long-term approach to dealing with hard costs. So I I I think, as we, as we said in the facilities workshop, we may have to talk about the building itself. Rather than how we're gonna lease them or what are we gonna do, like it's, so I'm just trying to like keep that in my brain. That that is a big discussion that has to happen alongside this one, but. And some of the capital costs that we heard on these buildings is way beyond leaseholder investment.
And I think that we would consider that when we do a lease, okay? But we don't have, what what Sophia is getting at is that we don't have a framework that we can rely on, we don't have a mechanism right now.
Okay, right.
This isn't, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, this isn't meant to dig us out of our current hole, this is made to keep us out of a future hole.
Okay, so the future holes.
Well, it's it's about leasing your space for the appropriate amount, then you can actually do that maintenance, right? And so what does that extend to? Does it extend to, okay, well, we need new roof, you know? As the city manager said earlier, if you're renting a house, you know, or like rent, you know, part of that rent is going to go into a pot. That will allow you to replace the roof when it's required, right? So similarly, you know, it's thinking about that for our our uh facilities that we have. And the important part being is, you know, this isn't anticipated, that we're gonna suddenly, you know, turn rates up to the point that, you know, it alleviates all of our current capital. Deficit, right? It's just to make sure that we're now starting to collect it, to collect it appropriately.
Just also why we're doing this in phases, like we're presenting to you phase one of this whole project. This agreement or this policy is, we're only doing phase one of it right now. Because, yeah, we, we're all aware um that we have some facilities that we have to address.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to, just to remind you, Counselor Ward, we have had, it's been thrown out there, like, we're not here to make any major decisions.
For sure.
Tonight on this, but it has been thrown out about whether or not you have this lease cost. And then you have like a one percent surcharge that automatically always goes into a capital. Project, right, like, so there are ways to structure it and that's been brought up here a few times when talking about buildings. Um over the years about having sort of a a kitty, so so that emergency fund. But that the the leaseholder would know that there's, this is the lease, and then there's this one percent that's going to um. Capital projects, and it's just, it just be, it's not they're paying for the whole ride, it's the, it's the offset and it's the goal forward. So that you're always doing that and everybody knows and it's transparent, it's just one idea, many ideas out there.
It just, like, my my sense is that this would change quite a bit depending on how many buildings we're holding on to. How many buildings we're gonna fix, how many buildings we're gonna just keep going. Like this will, a lot of that will be built around what happens with our our building uh investments in total.
Yeah.
No?
No, cause you're not gonna raise the lease on a particular building because of a deficit in another building. Yeah.
Well, what we wanna do is ultimately, what is the true cost of owning that, owning and maintaining that building?
Yeah.
And, you know, and councils can make a decision of how much you wanna subsidize that by, but that's a conscious decision. If you're going to say, um we have these buildings that we lease out to others and we're gonna, you know, the capital maintenance on them are a hundred. Thousand a year and we're not gonna charge them anywhere, anything for that, then you need to say, okay, well, we're gonna get that hundred thousand then. So at least you're making good financial long-term decisions and and um, cause right now we have this mishmash of, you know. Some people are responsible for, you know, fixing the roof and others aren't. And um some actually, you know, generate the funds to fix the roof and others just let the roof uh fall into disrepair. And um and we just need to do a better job of coming up with a sustainable plan of of how we manage that. And it's gonna take some time, took us some time to get into the situation we're in. All we're flagging on this is, um you know, one of those factors that you can look at is, does the tenant pay some of that? Long-term capital maintenance cost, whatever that mechanism is, it might be a one percent surcharge, it might be whatever. Um you know, you choose to subsidize, you know, that true cost by fifty percent, seventy-five percent or a hundred percent. So but at least we have the information that, and it's a conscious decisions by councils that, yeah, we're going, we're. We're okay to subsidize it, cause right now it was a hidden sort of cost that we haven't funded.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Payne.
I'm just interested, does the R D C K have this information on their recreational facilities?
So whole asset, through the chair. There's a whole asset management strategy coming forward in.
So it's coming forward as well, so it's not in existence.
Not in play.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, all local governments are moving in this direction. Are there any good examples that you know, Chair?
Um, somebody's got that.
Yes.
We're all getting there at the same.
They're all getting, we're all getting there at the same time and the, for some, yeah, these, I guess the, the good fortune might be that their, their. Properties aren't as old as ours, but some of them are, again, just as, just as worn out, so.
And we relied on capital grants and stuff in the past and, you know, hopefully we will still be able to get them, but. We've sort of, local governments have just allowed buildings to, you know, get old and then apply for a big grant to renovate it, right? That's, that's not a necessarily a sustainable model.
Counselor Page.
I am a bit curious, like it makes sense to me that the contributions would be held and uh allocated and attributed to the buildings that they come from. That's how we would determine it, but from the fi- from the financial side, from the back office side, like we then. Get reports on, it's part of our facilities piece that would tell us where our reserves are per building, would that go into our broader. Reserve balance for capital projects, like do we do a back calculation later on or we're trying to determine where costs are? Like do we keep very separate lines between these buildings going forward? Or do we try to manage it as a pool? Cause I think, you know, the two opinions we heard here are kind of touching on different sides. We do look at facilities at council writ large, but then of course, we definitely need to stop digging holes with some of these buildings and their lease rates. But.
Yeah, I think.
Where do we find the line between administrative burden and?
Well, we wouldn't.
Make business cases for these buildings.
Yeah, I don't think we would be looking at building reserves, building by building, because that just doesn't, you know. You know, maintenance on a building, you know, one year might be, this building is a lot of maintenance on it. And and that it doesn't need maintenance for twenty years, so um we can pool our our funding way better by. You know, all we're trying to do is keep enough that we can pay for these projects as they come up over over time, right? So you don't need it, every building, you don't need the, you know, to save for the new roof on that building, the new mechanical on that. That building, you, you know, as long as we have enough money to spend whatever that annual amount. Two million a year or whatever to do that, and um then we can pool those funds. And we need to hold way less money than if we tried to do this individual building by individual building. So um so I think from a management point of view, we're not, not, it's just like our equipment pool. We don't have a separate amount for each truck we have, we know that we have a fire truck come one year and then whatever, a line truck another year. We just need to make sure all of them are contributing ongoing, so we can replace them when they come up.
I think importantly is we know what the costs are for the building, so we've done a lot of work to understand the required maintenance for this building as an example. Based on that, you can kind of map out what your overall costs are and then, you know, find your appropriate lease fee. And then that just goes all into the pool for the, uh to get the effect that city manager was talking about. That, you know, you'd have to wait for a long time to get a four million dollars together for this building to do a major project. But you're pooling it all and you just have that asset, um, management plan that identifies what each building needs and you'd know to build out the cost based on that.
And I guess, if I may, like, I hear that as what we're aiming for, uh, we're here because that didn't necessarily happen and, and I think that's just the increased sophistication of the sector in general, we're, we're getting a lot better at understanding our costs. I just wonder what we're gonna be contemplating for our internal controls to ensure that, you know, when we don't, when we do have costs that are surprising or, or inflation in, in specific sectors that drive additional costs, we weren't anticipating that somehow we don't end up with a pooling effect where the capital fee increases for, you know, buildings that are being rented out that don't have an ice sheet and a concrete floor that has to be renewed every thirty years, on top of a roof that has to be renewed every thirty years, on top of a age factor mechanical system that has to be renewed. Cuz they're not, they're not all comparable, they're, they're quite, they're quite different buildings at times, different cost structures, so.
So you would know what, ultimately, what we need to fund that building, right?
Yeah.
And that would be factored into what we need all over, overall, right? So we know this building's with a nice sheet and all that is an expensive building, it needs to, you know, we need to somehow, either partly through maybe lease fees, partly through other taxation or whatever, we need to, you know, put so much aside to pay for that expensive building, um, as well as pay for this normal building, that's maybe not as much, but overall, we still need to, whatever, the two million a year or four million a year, what, whatever.
We'll be able to get a clearer sense of that because we'll be separating out where we're subsidizing organizations for which we're doing leaseholds, like leases will much more cover the building operation and renewal side of the things and the subsidy will show up on its own balance sheet.
Exactly.
In a more unified way across all those organizations.
Yeah, we have this very expensive building and we don't generate very much revenue for it, so um, that's a decision, yeah, you're subsidizing that type of activity by a significant amount, right, at least you you know, that's a conscious decision that you know that, right?
Good, you're it.
Thanks.
We're coming back more into the short term here rather than the lofty discussions, so, um, lease advertisement, so, um, this has come about obviously from the space in the civic center that will be becoming available. Um, but also when considering city hall as well or other spaces that may become available. Um, so business and services buildings, um, typically, these have been provincial organizations, government entities and like, that's the kind of direction that city hall has taken, but we have heard from council that maybe, there may be better uses for the space in city hall or elsewhere. Um, we're proposing that, um, these types of buildings could be listed through a Realtor where it was applicable. Um, but the city would like to reserve the right to also identify and select tenants where, for example, provincial entities, government entities, um, are known to the city already. Um, for assembly buildings, um, we're proposing a much more transparent process um, that would provide opportunity to the broader range of organizations within the city. Um, we'd like to lean on the existing public notice bylaw and make this a formal process where we would put this in the paper, on the website, through the channels that are identified in the public notice bylaw. And it would be upfront with fees, the term that we're proposing for the space, a description of any pertinent features, you know, what's particularly where it's a purpose-built space or it has like a dance floor in it, um, and then it would describe the application method and the closing date. Um, and then in terms of the application, again, we'll be trying to have a consistent process. Um, we, staff will develop a standard application template that would be used with, um, standardized questions for all organizations so that we can have the same kind of information from everyone. Um, we would be requesting financial records and we would, um, identify what the applicable ones would be for that. Um, and then a panel of staff would be assembled, um, that would be reviewing the applications. And that may, where it was a recreation space, may have staff that have relevant knowledge, or again, with cultural, that could be relevant staff. Um, that would be on the panel that could have an oversight of the, um, of that, um, type of use of the space. Um, and there are four key criteria that we're proposing would be, um, the main considerations when reviewing the applications. Um, so that would be, um, utilization of the space. Um, so this one, we're mostly thinking about how to maximize the use of the space. So that could be, um, whether it's seasonal use of the space, if it's an organization that's primarily operating in the space in the summer or in the winter, um, has there been consideration of if there are alternative uses that could be made available to the community in the off-season? Could also be on a day-to-day basis, um, this panel wouldn't be looking to do any kind of, um, social engineering, like, we're not planning to dictate scheduling the space, that's not what the city, um, is planning, um, but it could be a consideration in scoring the applications, um, if a group is planning on opening up drop-in use to other groups or partnering with other groups to make sure that the full time slots that are available in there are being used to the best of their abilities. Um.
Councilor Ward?
Thank you. So I suppose, what I'm getting, or what I'm hearing from you is that there, I mean, there are some groups that have a lot of social capital, but not a lot of capital, they do a lot for our city. And we could facilitate their, their, um, workings by giving them a really good deal on space. So that's gonna be interesting how to navigate that.
If it's in keeping with our policy.
If it's in keeping, that's, yeah, yeah, like, like a s- a group that does, has a lot of social capital and is a lot of good for our town might benefit hugely by getting a very affordable space, and that would be a choice of this body.
My thing, ultimately, council needs to say how, how much you're willing to subsidize.
Yeah.
Right?
We do all right.
You said that, you said that, well, and that's why we're bringing this.
Yeah.
And doing this work is because that decision on what level of subsidize, subsidization, I can't say that word tonight, um, that you're willing to provide, cuz right now it's, you know, there hasn't been a conscious decision of that for a long, long time, right?
Yeah.
So that's part of this is to say, okay, um, are you, are you willing to subsidize that by a hundred percent or, or not? So those, these are the key cri- criteria, really, these policy decisions on council, you know, what's important to you? Um, is it number one, utilization of that space, are you, are you the tenant that we ultimately lease, lease to is, is that the most important criteria, that that space is utilized? Um, as much as, uh, as possible, you know, we would, uh, potentially wait, if that wasn't, we'd wait that the highest part of this, um, you know, ultimately, we, we'll have a scoring matrix of that, you know, what's there? You know, does it align with the priorities of council, so if you're trying to support recreation or social or, or cultural, you know, again, we're gonna need to understand what that is, so, again, um, you would rate that, uh, you know, suitability of, of use, obviously, that's just, you know, this is building work, work for that person or they need it. Um, renovated or something, financial stability, again, depending what, um, you know, what, if you're looking at them to pay, you know, help pay, um, this level of cost, then we need to or responsible for some things, we need to make sure that they have the capacity to actually contribute to, say, a, uh, capital maintenance reserve if that's a, a priority of council, so these.
But on the flip side, but on the flip side, we have to be financially stable too, as one, as an organization.
And that should be a decision, a policy decision of council, you know, um, you, you know, that's the, you know, we can well, set this criteria, but it, it's based on really your policy decisions, you know? Um, you know, you, you know the components right now and, and, um, and we just haven't, we just haven't done this for.
Sure, thank you.
And yours?
Yeah.
Councilor Tate?
Thanks, um, so, I heard two pieces, I get the five percent, eight percent piece, awesome. I don't totally get how we're gonna adjust that proxy for the market, did we find a way to do that?
Well, things that we've kicked around is, um, so what would gymnastics have pay if they went out and rented a warehouse-type space for gymnastics? So I think we can get some of that market look as opposed to the current assessed value proxy, okay?
One thing I don't see in the key criteria that I would be interested in is not just the utilization of space, like, say, I hear, um, manager Chirico say things like dead ice and that sort of stuff, so, I'm not just the number of hours that the space is used, but I'm interested in unique users, because that's not the same thing, right? There are some, some groups that the same, same folks could use the space for twelve hours a day if they had the opportunity, but we wanted, um, look to have a broad, broad number of unique users in spaces, I think. Um, and it's not captured here, that might be captured under priorities, I'm not sure, but something to think about. Um, and when we say priorities, are we looking at our strategic priorities? I'm just curious, what does, where do, where is it coming from in your thoughts?
Well, in my thought?
Sure.
I think it has, it, it has to be in line with your strategic priorities, much like
Yeah.
um, the sustainable, um, leadership awards, like, it has to be in keeping with certain priorities of council.
Okay.
Right, so.
Is there anything identified, like, in the O C P that could help us understand those spaces?
Oh, that could, um.
I know we've got the, we've got those little icons, so that, it would be nice for us to drill down, what do we mean by priorities, cuz we have them in lots of different places, lots of different priorities and lots of different documents. So it'd be important that we all agree what the priorities for these spaces are.
Councilor Page?
Just wanna quickly riff off that, in, in to say that if we're gonna have this contemplation of, of a grant and a, a grant subsidy that we're providing, then maybe those strategic priority considerations live over there to a certain degree, cuz if we're baking in values of why we're subsidizing here on the lease side or we're trying to disangle and decouple that so that leases in so, in, in fact, drive building renewal.
So it's, I'm, I'm trying to understand, it's two parts, so there's the application part and there's gonna be a grading rubric for that, but then, separate from that, whomever is the winner would, could, if they so chose, come to council and ask for a subsidy against that lease. So I think what I hear you saying is those, where, how are we, um, judging the subsidy after the fact that we've already judged which group is best in that space?
Works like.
Yeah, there's some complexity there.
Some complexity.
Yeah.
And the, the complexity is that this, um, space becoming available isn't something that happens all the time, like, the majority of our, um, of our buildings are currently existing leases, so that grant, subsidy, whatever we choose to call it, would primarily be used for existing leaseholders.
Well, and we've had that conversation within the P T Es about how we create space for renewal and create opportunity for new evaluations, that it's not presumed that you get such a subsidy forever.
Yeah.
And that is one of the things that we need direction on, like, do these leases have a term? Are they five years and at the end of five years, you actually go out again and, and you might select the same tenant, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you're there for forty years.
Which can be quite disruptive to nonprofits.
Yeah, but it also, you know, um, gives you a chance to say, are they utilizing the space uh, fully, are they, cuz right now we get situations where they're secure in their space and they're not quite, they're not really quite interested in sharing it with others and, so there's some, you know, there's some downfalls of security, um, and, you know, if you, if they know they have to compete for the space every five years, then they're probably more open to making sure that they're making that space available to, you know, the broader community.
So I, yeah, I just, I just pulled up the lease renewal slide cuz it's directly what we've just discussed. Um, we did consider about, like, the, what you brought up, counselor, about, um, how to provide stability for leaseholders as well, like, it could be disruptive to these organizations potentially if they um, have uncertainty about their future in the space. Um, there was the consideration that, um, there could be pre-established, um, criteria that they would be reviewed against um, at the end of their lease, maybe it didn't get automatically re-advertised, we could review them against the pre-agreed criteria. They were still hitting everything that was agreed upon, um, that their lease could be renewed, extended, what that, whatever that looked like. Um, if there was any doubt, then it would go back out, um, which could still provide that same incentive to keep, um, to keep the level of performance within the lease at a high level, um, throughout, cuz they know that there is a review that happens on you know, the term length, every three years, five years, whatever that looked like. Um, which would still potentially provide the opportunity for organizations to, um, put in an application for a space where the current leaseholder isn't, um, isn't continuing to provide the same level of participation to the community, for example.
Councilor Payne?
Um, I'm just looking at, from the other perspective, is what would be the incentive of the uh, L S E to, uh, work hard, to, uh, do a lot of grant writing, to make capital improvements to your building, knowing at the end of their term they might sort of be outbid by someone. When I, to property management, uh, there was a lease with an optional, you know, five-year renewal renewed upon meeting certain criteria that we're talking about, so that to me gives more of a certainty than at the end of five years, it's a free market. Um, so, yeah, I, I, I know we're, this sounds like phase two that we're discussing right now, that I don't know.
I think we're ahead of the, yeah, nobody's, nobody's got any years in here, we don't have any fives, we don't have any tens, we don't have any ones, like, we, we are doing what we tend to do here a little bit, and that is jump way down the road, and I think there's some simple asks at the beginning about whether or not we sort of change the proxy on assessment, which I'm in some regards, particularly in terms of this building, I think is important to do if we're gonna look at this as as a business, as how we run the, this building. Um, given that there might be some social enterprise that we really like, that we will put in a corner, but basically, this is a business, I think, so I think there's some early steps here, but I think that we've been asking for some kind of process, we don't know what it looks like, but this is the first time I'd have to say that I've seen, um, this kind of process come to the table for at least an initial, um, look at. And it just goes to show you how complicated it all is and it will take time, and it's probably a good thing that we don't have fifty leases that all expire every year, like, on the disappearing, like, on January first, you're no longer there, so I think that we have time, but we need to get the transparency and I, and I like the idea of, um, the assembly buildings and the idea about the lease advertisement here, which I think is in the first part, and letting people know you know, what, what it is, what the expectations are, and I don't think that we've ever, um, had that, and I think people have gotten comfortable in their spots because there wasn't anything that they had to sort of, quote-unquote, answer to, this would at least give that for any new, um, leaseholders on a, on a go-forward process, of which is gonna be, you know, maybe one or two, given the current leases that we have. Councilor Tate, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, oh, thank you.
And I think the reality is, we do have some special purpose buildings for, so, you know, that's another decision of council, is, you know, on those special purpose buildings that are, you know, they're a theater, you know, or well, not looking at, you know, that's different from space, that's multi-purpose, that could be used for a bunch of different things, so I think that's something we need to look at as well when we have special you know, purpose-built buildings, are there other, you know, if you want a museum and we built a museum space, we're probably you don't feel the operators, the way you operate it, you consider the operator, but you probably still have the museum, it's not like we're gonna lease it out for
Hockey?
Recreation purposes or something, hockey, okay, just, so, so I think that's the reality as well, I think.
I'm not sure, Councilor Tate, did you?
Oh, she's, oh, nope, now she's got a question.
I, I do think our O C P might be able to speak to this better than our strategic priorities, only because council turns over every four years and there could be a shift and our strategic priorities are responsive to, like, the global economic environment, but just looking at those four foundational values and the three other thing, um, and we'll get a chance to look at it when you bring it back, but I think that aligns long-term as well.
Yeah.
Cuz we're looking at things long-term, thank you.
I, I would just like to add, if you don't mind, Mayor, um, that, you know, I guess it's like we're doing, we're kind of doing this parallel.
I, I would just like to add, if you don't mind, Mayor, um, that, you know, I guess it's like we're doing, we're kinda doing this parallel, like. The facilities issue, the leasing issue, but they do have to tie together. And they need that, like, long-term vision of like, how much we're gonna need to actually take care of these buildings, obviously leasing is not gonna cover. Will cover maybe some of that, but not even really close to scale of capital, so just trying to blend these all together. It's gonna be complicated, but definitely good work. Thank you. Thank you.
Any last remarks or?
No, I think, I think we've, I think you've heard from us, I mean, you know, we realize that this is not, uh, easy.
No.
Work, cause we can't tease it apart ourselves and, you know, this is work that's dependent on, um, the city. You know, doing this and staff and Sophia, I wanna thank you for your work, you, you sit at a desk, it's not even in an office. I'm surprised that you can get anything in. To be honest, so, um, particularly cause my door is right beside where you work, um. But, uh, no, this is, this is great, I mean, it's been a long time coming, twenty-five years, we're not gonna solve it in two hours, um. Tonight, but I think you've get, heard from us, the key direction to start to, to continue your work in, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you have other thoughts, just pass them on to Sarah and she can pass them on to Sophia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so there are no late items, so if I could have a resolution to adjourn, not anybody, don't have any backup. But we are gonna take a. Ten-minute break, because we have to switch all of the system over to have a special meeting. Councilor Lockburn, moving adjournment, thank you, seconded by Councilor Page, all those in favor? That carries, so, ten minutes, everybody?